Good evening. The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:00 PM on December 17th, 2024. This regular business meeting of the Osseo School Board is being conducted in the boardroom of the Educational Service Center. The meeting can be monitored electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of tonight's meeting will also be available on the district website. Seated in front of you this evening, from my left to your right are Director Thomas Brooks, Director Heather Douglas, Director Tanya Prince, myself, Jackie Mosketa-Jones, Director Sarah Mitchell, and Director Tam McGrady. Also present in the boardroom is Superintendent Dr. Heil and members of the superintendent's cabinet, as well as our student school board representatives. Antoinette Brown for Osseo Senior, Gavin Chabakoff for Maple Grove Senior, and Naomi Cooper-Grier for Park Center Senior. Okay, as you can see, we have a very cool house here at the ESC this evening. We'll be enjoying a performance of 5th graders with Woodland Elementary School's choir, along with many recognitions of our exceptional scholars. And we have a full agenda. There's extra seating available in the cafeteria and the forum room with a live stream on the monitors. Those of you who can, please stand for the pledge of allegiance and for the last time, Director Douglas, will you lead us?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Board members, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So.
Motion by Director Prince and seconded by Director Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. And seven to zero, apparently. That's awesome. We're so happy to welcome Woodland Elementary's 5th grade choir members. Board members will be moving to those seats that have the reserve signs right there. And Woodland's vocal music teacher Stephanie Dramowski will be getting everyone set and ready for their performance. We'd like to get a group photo before you all leave, so please don't leave that. And then we will be meeting up here for all the recognitions after the performance. So, board members, if you'll meet me down there.
Welcome. My name is Kenny and this is our Woodland Eagle Choir with our 5th graders. We are sharing four special songs with you guys and we hope you like them and are glad you came. And to present our lovely shirts, this is Kennedy. Hi, I'm Kennedy. We're so glad you guys are here this evening. As we all have matching shirts, a student every year designs her shirts for Eagle Choir. And we all wrote it on the color, but this year, Maps designed our shirts. Thank you. And now we have Piper introducing our first song.
Hi, my name is Piper. Our first song is called "United We Sing." Every year, Woodland Eagle Choir sings this song. This song brings joy and smiles to our faces and hopefully it will to you too. Now, let's get started.
Music reaches us, music reaches us, music touches us all inside. It's a language that everyone knows, it's a language that won't ever die. United we sing, la 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 la, united in song. Oh, united by music, la 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 la, this world can't go wrong, can't go wrong, can't go wrong. Can't go wrong. Music talks to us, music lives with us, music grows with us all inside. It's some music that everyone knows, it's a music that won't ever die. United we sing, la 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 la, united in song. Oh, united by music, la 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 la, this world can't go wrong, can't go wrong, can't go wrong. Can't go wrong. Palm tree, palm tree, palm tree, palm tree, day, 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 day. Shimmy, 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 palm tree, palm tree, palm tree, palm tree, day, 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 day. Shimmy, 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 shimmy. United we sing, la 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 la, united in song. Oh, united by music, la 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 la, this world can't go wrong, can't go wrong, can't go wrong. United we sing, la 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 la, united in song. Oh, united by music, la 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 la, this world can't go wrong, can't go wrong, can't go wrong. United we sing, sing!
We got a second song called "Rhythm of the Rain" and we got Penelope playing the instrument.
We need your help. We're gonna make a rainstorm.
Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rain, rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rhythm of the rain.
Peter Patter, Peter Patter, goes the rhythm of the falling rain. Peter Patter, Peter Patter, goes the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rain, rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rhythm of the rain. Falling, falling, listen to the rhythm of the rain. Falling, falling, listen to the rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rain, rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rain, rhythm of the rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain. Listen to the rhythm of the falling rain.
This one's gonna be boots of shining leather and it's gonna be in canon. Canon is basically one part, one group is singing and then another group joins. Everyone has three groups and then, yeah.
If you dance then you must have boots of shining leather. Money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, you won't need a cent, you see, so come and sing together. If you dance then you must have boots of shining leather. Money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, you won't need a cent, you see, so come and sing together. If you dance then you must have boots of shining leather. Money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would have boots of shining leather, money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, boots of shining leather, standing in your stocking, so in your cap of feather. But if you would have boots of shining leather, money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, you won't need a cent, you see, so come and sing together. If you dance then you must have boots of shining leather. Money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, you won't need a cent, you see, so come and sing together. If you dance then you must have boots of shining leather. Money in your pocketbook, in your cap of feather. But if you would sing with me, you won't need a cent, you see, so come and sing together.
Hi, my name is Ayesha and for our last song, we'd like to send you guys off with a great new year with this song from Nigeria called Odunde. Odunde means the new year is here. And in Nigeria, they have big celebrations and parties and they like to wear masks for good luck, to bring good luck in the new year.
Odunde, 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 Oduya. Odunde, 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 Oduya. You are the one who will be a hero. Ile, Ile, Odunde, Odunde, Odunde. Oh, Ile, Ile, Odunde, Odunde, Odunde.
So, thank you guys so much for coming and listening to our songs. We hope you had a great time and enjoyed the songs. Have a great rest of your night and have a happy new year.
Alright, good smiles. One, two, three.
Why don't you wait till they call you?
Mommy Strangowski!
Gavin, I think you're second. Second, yeah. You know, you can stand there till he calls your name and then go.
Our next standing agenda item is recognitions. It is amazing how many scholars we get to recognize this evening. We'll be doing them one by one and would like to get a group photo after each recognition. Coaches, when I call your name, please step up to the podium and introduce yourself along with your athletes who are able to attend this evening. First up, we have Park Center Pirates Adapted PI Soccer who plays third at State.
Alright, hello everyone. Thank you so much for having me. I am the head coach of this awesome adapted athletics program, Jonah Pretty. I am incredibly proud of all the efforts that these kids have put in over the years. I came on a couple of years ago post-COVID to help rebuild this program. And these kids have been such a big instrumental role in helping us get to the point where we are today. We've had some adversities over the last two, three years. I lost my partner in crime, my coach, Josh Wimmergren, January of 2023. And, you know, these kids have just worked through so many adversities such as losing Josh and just other things too. Just going from learning the skills as far as sports and just as far as becoming better and better people, that's what we're here to do at the end of the day. And I'm just so incredibly proud of each and every single one of these men, my fellow coaches. They've just done a phenomenal job. You know, with life, sometimes we have to sometimes make adjustments and all that. And so, yeah, we had a couple of things that we had to make some shifts in internally. And we really showed up well at the state tournament to represent our district proudly. And, you know, we had players switch different positions to make things work for the betterment of the team. And we just had that consistent positivity being our number one priority and we had such a great showing at state tournament. I'm super incredibly proud of every single one of you. You guys came from boys to more men with this state tournament. And it's just gonna continue to show as we go more and more throughout the year. And we'll see if we can come back here in three months for floor hockey. So, alright, awesome job. Okay, cool. Alright, thank you. Got my fellow coach helping me out, of course. Yeah, so first off, I'd like to recognize Joshua Plummer. And I'd like to recognize Evan Bartlett, Babu So, Abi Prasad, Bennett Listman, Caleb Plummer, Kent Williams, Adi Barati, Student manager Shivani Prasad. Yeah, my awesome fellow coach Joel Listman helping us out. Thank you so much, Joel.
We may have to take a knee and cut tall.
This way, we can take a photo. Us tall boys, let's maybe fill the gaps. So let's just come in here, let's make it open. Here we go. Great.
Yeah, get in here.
Wait, wait, we gotta get the district shot. We gotta get the district shot.
Okay, next is Maple Grove Senior High School's Libby Baker for her second place finish at State in the 100-yard backstroke. Coach Natalie Strauss, you're on.
Hello. My name's Natalie Strauss. And for the last four years, I've had the pleasure of serving as the head coach for the Maple Grove Girls Swim and Dive Team. Tonight, I get to introduce one of our senior captains, Libby Bacher. Libby has been a member of the team for five years, only missing the 2020 season due to COVID restrictions. In that time, she has consistently been a top point earner, has been named MVP the last four seasons, Section 5AA Swimmer of the Year for the last two years, and been a state meet participant all five seasons. Libby is a two-time All-American and holds three school records. This year, at the Class 2A State Meet, she finished second in the 100 backstroke after two years of third place finishes. With a time of 54.55, just 0.08 seconds off of another. With a time of 54, 55, just 0.08 seconds off of another school record. This time puts her in the top 15 of all-time times for the Minnesota State High School League for the Hundred Backstroke. Next year, Libby will continue her swimming career attending the University of Missouri. Congratulations, Libby. Thank you for representing Maple Grove so well over the years and good luck on everything that comes next.
Maple Grove Senior High School Girls Tennis placed third at State this year. Coach Dan Haredal, Hardal? Hardal, thank you. Will you please step up to the microphone?
This is a great event, uh, because the, the students kind of deserve the attention. Uh, because it takes a, a great commitment, especially in tennis. Tennis is an individual sport and it requires hundreds of hours to really be good and excel as much as we were able to. Our tennis team was 21 and 5. Uh, we made it to State for the fourth consecutive year. It is not easy to make State four consecutive years in a row, especially when Wayzetta is one of our section competitors. So I'm very proud of the girls. Uh, it's an awesome team for me to work with, I love every one of them. We had no drama. And our parents were as fabulous as the girls were. It was such a pleasure uh, to see them come to the matches and support us. We, uh, when we entered the state tournament this year, we were uh, seeded, I think, fifth, fourth? And we got third place beating the third and the fourth seeded team in State to win third. So, I, uh, come on up. What is a great year, great year for us. Want to introduce uh, our captains, Maddie Larson. Shai Baki. Captains for next year, Lexi Helmer-Jonki. Peyton Lydell. Summer Odie. Summer, when Summer was a seventh grader, I was significantly taller than she was. Now, as a 10th grader, look at what happened. Millie Larson. Lydia Walseth. Ethan Langden. Kara Aho. Riley Tom. Sailor Manam. Lacey Blizzard, our tennis team. Thank you, thank you. Thanks for having us, that's cool of you.
Alright, Coach, we need them over here for a bit. Oh, they already know what to do. Like, our pictures get taken all the time. Are we extra fun?
Oh, yeah, I forgot, sorry, I forgot Scott Larson, where's Scott? Forgot to introduce Scott Larson, missed uh, another coach, you still have.
Alright, big smiles. Thank you. Okay, uh, Maple Grove Senior High Boys Soccer finished second place at State this year. Coach Greg Lineiger, please step up to the microphone. Did I say that right?
Thanks for having us tonight. Um, we represent boys soccer. First of all, I want to say congratulations to all the other teams represented from the district tonight. Football, soccer, swimming, and tennis. Um, it's awesome just to be here and this is our second year back, so again, we appreciate you having us. Um, I'm Coach Justin Turner, I'm co-head coach with Greg Lineiger. Um, I will now announce uh, our players here that are representing the team tonight. We're a little short because a lot of our players are already in the club soccer season and in some full swing, but um, we are happy to be here. Um, Owen Burscham. Ike Duo. Solen Gavon Cheese. William Sarkla. Ousmane Tore. Gavin Chabika. Coach Greg Lineiger. And Coach Mohamed Said. One last quick thing about this group, so this group we've had for uh, the past four years, these seniors that are leaving. Um, four straight conference champion- championships, three straight state appearances, um, two straight state final appearances. And hopefully next year we'll be back and try to get that uh, coveted, yeah, right? Just gotta follow after this guy over here. Try to win it all next year, but again, thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
And last but not least, we have the 2024 6A State Champions. Maple Grove Senior High School Football. Coach Adam Spurl, please.
Uh, thanks for having us. Uh, I'm Adam Spurl, I'm our uh, Maple Grove Crimson Football Head Coach. Uh, tonight, we have about 20-some kids with us. Uh, but these young men uh, woke up every morning, were at 5:50 in the morning workouts. Uh, worked out in the morning before school. Uh, and the part uh, that is an impressive number is we finished with the second highest GPA in the 6A football. Uh, we finished with a GPA of 3.42 amongst our 85 players, so uh, a great number to have. Uh, plus our program sitting with over 200 kids in the program, which is the highest we've been in quite a while. So, a lot to be excited for and uh, we had a great season. Uh, and I'll call all these guys up. Uh, seniors are gonna come up first, juniors second. I would ask that you hold on to the applause till everybody's done because there's so many of them, okay? So, uh, the first uh, young man we have is Kevin Tope. Yeah, shake everybody's hand. Uh, followed by Carson Dufault. Next, we have Henry Severs. Dylan Self. We have Carson Long. We have Jack Weigel. Next, we have Oliver Walseth. Followed by Mike Tracy. Next, we have Alex Jack. We have Gabe Hockett. We have Dylan Volko. We have Harry Johnson. We have Will Sarkla. And we have Ethan Berry, these are our seniors that are here tonight. Okay, so same thing, uh, try to hold it till we're done with all of our juniors that are with us. We have James Engel. We have Reed Verbot. We have Dawson Kretsch. We have Carson Kruger. We have Tom Monicondon. We have Luke Nelson. We have Lucas Soderholm. We have Jaden Hubbard. We have Louis Tykrow. We have Chris Beshada. We have Rowan Duffing. And last but not least, Trevor Skalicki. Alright, hey gentlemen, do me a favor, uh, let's make our way back in front. Some on knees, some on uh, kneeling down, some of you might have to sit, make it work though.
Alright, big smiles, guys. We have some amazing athletes, don't we? Alright, the next agenda item is student school board representative reports. Some more awesome students. Alright, Antoinette, will you please share your report, please?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Antoinette Brown and I will be representing Osseo Senior High. As we enter into winter break, we remind our scholars that Osseo is innovative, courageous, and focused and reflective. While also blasting into winter break with the spirit week, Monday Pajama Day, Tuesday Jersey Day, and more. Speaking of winter break, our student senate scholars work day and night, literally, to get our lights hung up around the school for a cozy environment. Last month, Osseo Senior High brought the most students to our districts, from our district, thanks to our boys hockey team, to our salt conference for athletes. We couldn't help but to take in the message and everything we heard on the bus about Dr. Thiel's presentation on holding space, space, excuse me. Our winter sports have been off to a pretty good start and I can't wait to see them succeed throughout the season. Our Black Student Union scholars have worked endlessly to prepare for Osseo Speaks, which is also known as our Black History Month Celebration in February. Which will revolve around Black love, Black unity, and Black joy. Our wonderful orchestra alongside with our choir has been performing to a variety of schools amongst our district. We're super excited to see our second trimester go super strong. And I would also like to give a special thank you to Jackie Jones, Heather Douglas, Tamira Grady.
Thank you. Uh, Naomi, will you please share your report?
Hello again, my name is Naomi Cooper-Hyphen-Grier and it is finally the month of December. Everybody has been anticipating this week of the year. Teachers have been getting their last few tests in, students have been trying to get all their assignments done, and many events have been happening before we hit off this year with a bang. I would love to start off with our wrestling team, which has been killing the competition, many of our first, second, third, and fifth place awards. It's been a good Thursday and Saturday for our PC wrestling team as they went to Mickey D's for their outstanding victory. I would love to shine a light on our music department at Park Center as they've traveled from elementary school to the next. Playing and singing some tunes these kids have never heard of, and they were just all over it. Band, orchestra, and choir got an all-around pause. And showing these kids that music classes have a lot of fun and engaging experiences to offer, so maybe they'll do it too. There has been a lot of fundraising around our school these last couple of weeks. Tarot card readings, hot cocos for a great price, pictures with Santa that you'll have for a lifetime. And trust me, these pictures have been the highlight of Park Center for many years. And I would like to give a big shout out to all the people who make these fundraising activities happen and make them possible. Lastly, I'd like to wrap up my statement with our yearbook team. They have been promoting like there's no tomorrow, literally. They've been coming down to the cafeteria every Wednesday to make sure people are buying their yearbooks. Every Wednesday, they set up a theme so students can dress up and take pictures. Last Wednesday was Pajama Day and tomorrow is Ugly Sweater, so I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of that. Thank you for having me again, that is it.
And Gavin?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Gavin Chabika and I'm here to represent Maple Grove Senior High School. Uh, so I'm just gonna start with some, uh, or I guess our one fall sport. Um, prison football did it. Um, they finally um, won the state championship again and brought the second state title back to Maple Grove. I would also like to thank the school board for honoring the Crimson soccer team on our season. Uh, thanks for all the support and recognition. As winter sports begin, here's how we are shaping up. Boys basketball is off to a strong start, the team took down rival Park Center, sorry. And showed promise against close games, uh, tough, against close games against tough late-conference opponents. Girls' basketball has had a fantastic start with one close loss so far and plenty of wins. They're one of the top-ranked teams in the state and they're poised for a deep state tournament run. Boys hockey has been off to a rough start, but they look to bounce back against the Tenille tonight. Girls' hockey is off to a very strong season and they're looking to secure a win against Rogers later tonight. Um, our most decorated sports program, Dance, won their final Northwest Suburban Conference uh, championship. Uh, Competitive Cheer will be hosting their Crimson Cheer Challenge, bringing in numerous schools from all over the state. Uh, Norisking has had trouble starting the, or getting the season started with limited snow, but Elm Creek has been doing great to support our skiers. Um, other winter sports underway include Crimson Wrestling, Crimson Gymnastics, and Boys Swim and Dive. Um, and now for some activity and club updates. All of our music programs have delivered outstanding performances this month showcasing their talent during the winter concert season. The orchestra, band, wind ensemble, jazz band, and choir, all captivated audience with memorable concerts celebrating the season with exceptional music. Um, DECA, members are hard at work preparing for the next month's district competition. Um, NHS just wrapped up their cross food drive, which was a tremendous success. I myself uh, collected donations and was astounded to see um, all of what people were bringing in to their foundations classes. Um, Crimson Choir has been spreading holiday cheer around Maple Grove uh, with their caroling. Uh, and even if you're not in Crimson Choir, you can still join and it's a lot of fun. Um, Crafts for a, for a Cause is a newly launched club, which is aimed at connecting the community through crafting for those in need. Maple Grove Science Bowl is officially underway and two students got recognized for AAA awards, so congratulations to Juno Kang and Jacob Banck for being recognized for their excellence in the academics, arts, and athletics. As for an update on the phone policy, the phone policy has still been going smoothly. However, a notable complaint many students had was that teachers were turning the phone confiscation into a game with some having competitions for who can collect the most. Although it's fair to make it lighthearted and to have fun with it, it is not always in the best interest of the students. Looking ahead, with winter break around the corner, the students are powering through final exams and projects. And for seniors, I know it, wrapping up college applications. As we head into the holidays, things are stressful but lighthearted in the presence of holiday cheer. Thank you for your time.
Nice work. Student representatives review the board meeting packet in advance and are prepared to answer questions from the board members on issues to seek student input related to agenda items for this evening's meeting. Board members, do you have any questions for our amazing scholars?
Sure. A couple of our policies tonight are specifically related to students, like the cell phone use and the distribution of materials by school-sponsored events. So did you have any input on those particular policies tonight? No problem. Thank you.
So the other obvious question, I wanted to at least give you an opportunity to respond, if you want to, don't feel obligated, but the book today that we are hearing later, The Bluest Eye, I don't know if you had an opportunity to read it, to review anything about it, but just wanted to know if you had any comments or feedback from the board today?
It didn't load.
For me, I've heard that, well, a couple of minutes ago, that the author of the book was a great author, so that's kind of a little bit of my feedback on the book.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, students. We appreciate you. Our next agenda item is the truth in taxation hearing. John Morsted, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, will share the information. At the conclusion of John's presentation, he will call, sorry? Oh, did you have something else to say? I'm sorry.
Me?
No? It's all good. Okay, so John will call for public comments, for anyone wishing to comment about the levy after his presentation. John?
Thank you, Chair Muscata-Jones, Superintendent Pyle, and school board members. The presentation today is part of the annual required truth in taxation presentation that is part of our annual levy process. The requirements of this presentation are that it be held between November 25th and December 28th. Unfortunately, yes, it can happen on December 25th, if you really want to be mean. Has to start after 6:00 PM and can be part of a regular meeting like we're doing today. It must allow for public comment and the district can adopt the final levy at the same meeting. It must include information on the current year budget and the proposed property tax levy. Tonight's agenda includes background information on school funding, our district's current budget, the proposed tax levy for taxes payable in 2025, and an opportunity for public comment on that proposed levy. The Minnesota Constitution, Article 13, creates a uniform system of public schools and grants limited taxing authority to those schools. The state legislature sets a very specific set of rules that schools must follow regarding revenue. Maxims are established and districts can levy less, but not more unless approved by voters in November. As a result, our funding is very highly regulated. The basic general education formula that governs most of our revenue is, has always lagged inflation. Since 2002, 2003, the state general ed formula has not kept pace with inflation. For fiscal year 2324, an increase of 4% was given at the state legislature, or about $275 over the previous year, and in fiscal 2425, our current year, an increase of 2% or about $143 over the previous year was approved. Per pupil allowance for the fiscal year 2425 of $7,281 would need to increase by another $1,646, or about 18.7% to have kept pace with inflation since the 0203 school year, which would have resulted in an allowance of 8,645. That amount for Osseo is more than $30 million annually. Another ongoing funding issue is the underfunding of special education. In fiscal year 23, the cost of special education was underfunded by $726 million across the state. While the state is providing more than they have in previous years, we're still looking at a statewide deficit of more than $455 million by fiscal year 2027, which will force schools to either cut other programs or ask local taxpayers to increase the operating levies to cover the shortfall. Our district has used both of these strategies to help offset in the past. The tax levy is based on many state-determined formulas plus voter-approved referendums. An increase in school taxes does not always correlate to an equal increase in the budget. Our budget is broken down into individual funds that you see in the list here, and it's important to understand that the school district's budget lags the certification of the tax levy by about six months. So for this presentation, we'll be looking at the budget for the current 2024-25 school year and the 25-26 budget that this revenue we're talking about will apply to. The school board will actually take action on in June of 2025. School districts and cities and counties run on different schedules. So the district's funds received in 2025 will be, again, part of that 25-26 school year, which runs from July 1 of '25 to June 30 of '26, while cities and counties run on a calendar year with the matching levies to go with it. So here's a one-page look at our financial results from 2024. I apologize for how small it is, but there's a lot of detail here. Beginning with our starting fund balances, revenues and expenditures, and ending fund balances. So the gray columns are the year we just completed, and then the budget for the current year, fiscal year 25, is shown in the blue columns, again with revenues, expenditures, and what we expect our ending fund balances to be. This pie chart shows how the revenue from each fund relates to each other. The general fund makes up about 78.3% of all revenue that we receive. Within the general fund, here's a look at the categories where funding is received. State aid is clearly the largest category, making up a little over 60% of the funds, and property taxes make up about 21% of the revenue. Switching to expenses, again, just, we'll just focus on the general fund. Here's a look at our spending by main categories. As you can see, salaries and benefits make up 84.3% of the budget. So you know, education is a very labor-intensive industry and thus the vast majority of our money is spent on people. Here's another view of our general fund expenditures by each specific program area. So now we'll move into the specifics of our proposed property tax levy in these four areas. Every property received a proposed property tax statement like this as an example. It contains proposed property taxes compared to last year by each taxing jurisdiction and whether it is voter-approved or other for the school district, and the time and the place of the meetings available for truth in taxation. Each school district may levy taxes in over 40 categories. Maximum levy amounts, as calculated by the Minnesota Department of Education, for each category are set by state law or by voter approval. The property tax process and key steps in the process are summarized on the next slide. Any of these steps may be, may affect the taxes on any parcel over the, on any piece of property, but the district really only has control of one of the six steps. So in the six steps here, I'm not going to read through all of them, but it's just real quick, it's starting with the city county assessor determining the market value, those legislative formulas, your county auditor doing a calculation, the Department of Ed calculating limits for the school districts, the school board setting a levy, and then the county auditor distributing that information via your property tax statements. Approval of the district's levy starts in the summer. In the Minnesota Department of Ed then sets a preliminary levy limitation report, which outlines the maximum amount each district can levy, with the exception of any voter-approved measures. Our board approved the preliminary levy on September 24th. In mid-November, the county mailed up proposed property tax statements to each resident. Today is the public hearing on the proposed levy and the board will be acting later in this meeting on that. The proposed payable 2025 tax levy is an increase from the 2024 tax levy of $715,976 or .51%. Changes by levy category and reasons for major increases and decreases are included in the following slides. So again, here's, here's the, for transparency, here is the full picture, but we'll go through kind of the individual pieces, just to make it a little bit easier. Our voter-approved operating levy increased by about $800,000. This increase is primarily due to an inflation factor on the levy and the expected increase in enrollment. The capital projects or technology levy increased by about $900,000. This levy is calculated by multiplying 4.702% of the district's overall net tax capacity. The reason for the increase is our net tax capacity increased by 6.7% over the previous year. So this is pretty much a picture of the value of the district and as it grows, that 4.7% grows with it. LTFM or Long-Term Facilities Maintenance, the decrease in the general fund is mostly offset with an increase in our debt service fund, but I'm going to do both of them together on the one slide. This is due to the issuance of deferred maintenance bonds for the LTFM portion of our Building a Better Future projects. We coordinate these levies to try to maintain a level or declining tax rate each year. Each year, the levy contains prior-year adjustments, so prior adjustments are a decrease of $1.6 million. These are levies that we start by doing estimates on and then as the year wraps up, we come back and retroactively reconcile that information and put either a credit or charge on the next levy. So we're going to move into the Community Service Fund. Community Service School Age Care Levy is increasing by $300,000. In previous years, we did not have enough staffing capacity to support the demand for school age care, and this year, we have been able to hire enough staff to cover the demand and do not have any families on the waitlist. Okay. Many factors can cause a change in a tax bill for an individual property. Changes in the value of the individual property easily have the biggest impact. Changes in the total value of all the property within the district, and increases or decreases in levy amounts caused by changes in state funding formulas, local needs and costs, voter-approved referendum, and other factors. So I want to have a simple way to be able to explain that. So the simplest way is imagine a pie. The district's levy makes up the entire pie, and each property owner has a small slice of that pie. As the market value increases, your slice of pie, as the market value of your home increases, your slice of pie would get a little bit bigger. If it decreases, your slice gets smaller, and if the overall district's value increases, your slice gets smaller because there's more pieces to share of that pie. So as the more property owners are added, that same pie is simply divided more times. Here's a very simplified example. If there are two identical properties, both worth $100,000, the district's levy is $500. In this case, each house would pay $250 of the levy. The orange house increases in value by 10% to $110,000, and the blue house increases by 25% to $125,000. If the levy remains the same at $500, the orange house would see a decrease of $16 to $234, while the blue house would see an increase of that $16 to $266. So the levy still generates the $500, it just distributed differently because of the change in value. There were a few important legislative changes to note that affect the pay 25 levy. Providing a tax benefit to homeowners, excuse me, the homestead exclusion provided a tax benefit to homeowners by increasing the valuation to between $76,000 and $517,000 starting this next tax year. And also, there was an increase in first, the first-tier limit of the ag homestead land from $2.15 million up to $3.5 million. So just making larger ranges that those credits apply to. So now we're going to take a four-year comparison look at property values in school taxes. Our examples that we're using here are for property in the city of Osseo. Amounts are for 2025, preliminary estimates and final amounts could change slightly. Our estimates have been prepared by Ellers, the district's municipal financial advisor. Please note that when taxes we're talking about here are just your school taxes. We're not talking about other taxing authorities, as there's a number of them on your tax statement, typically the county, the city, and some other taxing jurisdictions like the mosquito control district and odd ones like that. We're going to show you two, two examples. The first example shows no increase in home value over those four years. If you, if you, your value stayed the same. And the second shows what the average increase over four years has been, which in this case is 24.1%. So here you can see actual and estimated taxes from 2022 through 2025. Please note, this is, again, with no valuation change, so the value of your property didn't change, and only accounts for the school portion of that property tax. There's a lot of information, so let's kind of put it into a graph form here, so it's a little bit easier to follow. So here's the same information. A $300,000 home is estimated to see a decrease of $39 in their school property taxes if there was no change in property value, and a $400,000 home would see a decrease of $44. We do have this graph for some commercial and apartment properties, and you just used a million dollars as the base factor, so a commercial property would see a decrease of $9 and an apartment property would see a decrease of 41. Now, we want to look at those same homes with the assumed value increase over the four years. So again, this is with the increase of 24.1% cumulative increase in property value over time. We don't have this estimate for commercial and apartment properties available, but in this particular situation, both a $300,000 home and a $400,000 home in our district would see a decrease of right around $24. The state does provide a few property tax relief options available to residents. I'm just going to note the three, and if you have any interest in these, I would recommend that you contact a tax professional to see if you qualify. They are the homestead credit refund, special property tax refund, and also the senior citizen property tax deferral. The next step in our process is to include public comment and then take board action later in the levy, so I would, at this time, turn it back to Chair Muscata-Jones to ask for any public comment.
Okay, at this time, if there's anyone that would like to come up and speak on taxation, now's your chance. Okay, seeing no one, we will move on to our next agenda item. The next agenda item is a long-term facilities maintenance update presentation. Information will be shared by, shared by Dale Carlstrom, Director of Facilities and Operations. Thank you, Dale.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Board Directors, and Cabinet Members. I'm here this evening with two members of my facilities operations team. Jeff Arthur is our Assistant Director of Facilities Operations and Colin O'Brien, our Project Management Coordinator. This evening, we will be reviewing the facilities projects and planning for long-term facility maintenance. Our outcomes for the presentation are to inform the board regarding construction results from our summer 2024 work, construction planning for the summer of 2025, and financial and operational results for the work that's been completed since the inception of our revised 10-year LTFM in the summer of 2017. Finally, I am, I will briefly describe some LTFM projects for the summer of 2025, construction season, and the role LTFM plays in our Building a Better Future planning. We began our more extensive LTFM efforts in the summer of 2017 with a revised 10-year budget of $241 million. Our current board-approved 10-year plan is $287 million. This summer was the eighth construction season, and we've completed $200 million in renovations and restoration work throughout the school district. Our original 10-year plan budgeted $205 million through the eight years, and we've pretty much hit that number. I'd like to recognize the team of professionals that helped make this plan a I'd like to recognize the team of professionals that helped make this plan a reality. Our facilities operations team, led by our Assistant Director Jeff Arthur, our facilities operations project manager Colin O'Brien, our health and safety team, led by Rachel Kohler, our owners' representative team at ICS, our mechanical design team at Halberg Engineering, our civil engineers at Larson Engineering, our architectural design teams at World Architects and ATS and Art Architects, and our environmental consultants and commissioning agents at IEA. All these professional partners work together to improve our facilities and share in the facilities operations department's commitment to stewardship of our facilities and our resources. I'd like to express my gratitude to these people who make our facilities improvements possible. In 2016, ICS, our owners' representative, conducted a system-wide facilities assessment. The ICS team presented the deferred maintenance picture to the board and identified two hundred and forty million dollars. At that time, our team, our ten-year plan was a hundred and thirty million dollars. Also, in 2016, we had over two thousand outstanding work orders and significant challenges to maintain occupant comfort in our buildings. Our aging infrastructure was consumed, had consumed a lot of our energy dollars and our general fund dollars. The board recognized the need and approved our more aggressive approach to bring our facilities assets up to the current standards. Today, I'm happy to report that we have consistently run under two hundred outstanding work orders, and our work order turnaround time is under five days. The operations team is committed to measuring the effectiveness of our restoration efforts. From the beginning of our ten-year plan, we have monitored, measured, and compared and the utility usage to ensure that we are experiencing the desired effects. Our mechanical improvements are monitored for reliability, serviceability, occupant comfort, and cost. We have invested in building automation systems that monitor all the HVAC systems. Our team is trained to use the building automation tools to react to system issues before they become problems. From the beginning of the accelerated ten-year plan, we have noticed significant reductions in energy usage. To help our team determine if our work is effective, we have contracted a third-party energy consultant to assess our energy use and to identify areas of concern. This summary chart from the 2024 results shows forty-three percent reduction from the 2015 baseline in electric use. We can attribute these savings to efficient lighting, modernized HVAC systems and equipment, and building automation. In a similar way, we have experienced significant savings in heating fuel. In 2024, the results show a twenty-three percent reduction in natural gas use from the base year. Now I'll describe the projects that we completed this summer. During the 2024 summer construction season, we conducted six major construction projects at Cedar Island, Brooklyn Middle School, Northview Middle School, Edinburgh, Fernbrook, and Rush Creek. During the summer, we completed the second phase of the seven point three million dollar project at Cedar Island Elementary. This extensive project marks the completion of renovations at the sister schools Palmer Lake, Fair Oaks, Birch Grove, and Cedar Island. We have done significant renovations to all parts of Cedar Island, with exception of the media center, which will be renovated in the summer of 2025 under the Build a Better Future initiative. We will talk about this further when we discuss next summer's projects. Pictured here is an example of renovations we've done. We replaced all the restroom piping, fixtures, finishes, lighting, and HVAC. Pictured here is an example of the extensive nature of the work at Cedar Island and the remarkable work that is completed inside of three months. During the summer, we started the Brooklyn Middle School renovation project with extensive work on the second and the third floor with major renovations in the media center. This is a twenty-two million dollar project, and we have completed ten million dollars of work in Phase One. Pictured here is a photo of the media center when the demolition was complete, and the picture on the right is the new media center space, a very student-friendly, welcoming, next-generation learning space. The Brooklyn Middle classroom renovations replaced ceilings, lights, finishes, casework, and mechanical. In addition to the extensive renovations to the student spaces, we replaced all the hydronic piping, mechanical equipment, and both second, on both second and third floors. Moving on to Northview Middle School, we had an extensive work done there on the second floor where we did a total gut and remodel to the classrooms and the media center. In addition, we did a complete remodel of the art rooms on the first floor and restored finishes and casework in the counseling department. The total construction on this project is six point eight million dollars. The image on your left shows the extent of the Northview Middle School demolition in the first week of June. At that point, it was difficult to imagine that we would have had this space ready for class in August. The image on your right shows classroom ready for the first day of school. All new interior walls, finishes, doors, ceilings, whiteboards, monitors, and furniture. As with Northview's middle school's classroom, the media center was totally gutted and redesigned to reflect the Build a Better Future initiative to create next-generation learning spaces. Next, Jeff Arthur will share with you our mechanical restoration efforts throughout the system.
Thank you, Dale. Good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Heil, Cabinet Members, and Community. As part of the LTFM deferred maintenance projects, we've set out to replace all the mechanical equipment at the seven sister schools: Basswood, Oakview, Weaver, Edinburgh, Fernbrook, Rush Creek, and Woodland. This summer's work focused on Rush Creek, Edinburgh, and Fernbrook, where we installed new building temperature controls, replaced air handling equipment, and replaced the building's heating and cooling piping. Collectively, for context, we completed improvements and replacement of over four miles of pipe at those buildings. This often work, this work is often not seen by occupants, but contributes greatly to building comfort, energy savings, and reliability. On the left is our new chiller at Rush Creek being craned onto the roof in mid-July. And the picture on the right is just a progress photo of Fernbrook Elementary mid-summer. All of the ceilings were removed to access parts of the mechanical system that were being replaced, and the ceilings were put back in as new. As far as district-wide projects, each year, our facilities team completes numerous owner-managed projects throughout the district. Almost every site in the district receives some form of improvement each year, and this year was no exception. Here's a brief sampling of projects completed this summer. Pavement replacement at Northview and Osseo Senior High, classroom flooring replacement at Birch Grove and Palmer Lake, gym and cafeteria flooring replacement at Garden City, locker replacement at Oakview, interior door replacement at Maple Grove Middle School, Fernbrook, and Edinburgh, exterior door replacement at Cedar Island, Fair Oaks, and Osseo Senior High, roofing replacement at Arbor View, Brooklyn Middle, Maple Grove Senior, and Osseo Senior High, baseball dugout replacement at Osseo Senior High, parking lot lighting at Northview, OALC, and the ICE Arena, district-wide tennis court resurfacing and stadium track replacement at Maple Grove Senior High. As briefly explained in the previous slide, a good portion of our annual budget goes to funding categorical projects. Our facilities team annually reviews, prioritizes, and the greatest needs for all these categories. Here are a few brief examples of our accomplishments since 2017. Each year, we complete flooring replacement in two or three buildings. Seventy percent of our district-wide flooring has been replaced. The typical flooring we have been replacing is roughly twenty-five years old. Most of our facilities have been repainted within the last ten years. We try to maintain an eight-to-ten-year cycle of repainting buildings as a general rule of thumb. Eighty percent of our student lockers have been fully replaced or repainted. Locker life is dependent on use and condition, but is expected to last roughly twenty-five years. Ninety percent of the doors and hardware, more than twenty-five years old, has been replaced. Replacement is based on functionality and condition. Seventy-five percent of our facilities are entirely updated to LED lights. The remaining sites are scheduled to be completed over the next three years. One hundred percent of our exterior lighting has already been updated to LED. You may have heard that there is a governmental fluorescent lighting ban going into effect soon. It is with our proactive planning and your financial support that we've been able to complete these projects and have no concerns meeting this requirement. Roofing. Osseo Area Schools has approximately three point one million square feet of roofing, covering thirty-one buildings, five hundred and seventy-five roof sections, with an average age of eighteen years. High-performance built-up roof assemblies with gravel surface are the design standard district-wide. We use a combination of preventative maintenance, restoration, and replacement to achieve the longest life cycle and generate the best possible return on investment. Existing roof assemblies are restored at twenty-three to twenty-six years of their life cycle. When restored, they will produce an overall average life of more than forty years. This process minimizes disruption to the district and is achieving at roughly half, roughly forty percent of the cost of a new roof. Each year, the district assesses roughly five percent of the roofing portfolio through restoration or replacement. An annual review of problem areas and existing conditions ensures the most critical areas are addressed on a year-over-year basis. Ongoing preventative maintenance and proactive leak response helps keep the existing roof sections dry and functional through their life cycles. Paving. Our civil engineer partner works with our facilities team to establish and maintain a replacement cycle for our pavement and concrete. Each year, we determine the highest priorities and develop an action plan that aligns with our budget parameters. After the construction season in the fall, we reassess all sites to determine our next round of priorities. The cycle continues year after year. As you would imagine, we have a significant amount of pavement in the district. And for context, if you were to take all of our pavement, you could make a road from here to St. Cloud. With our current replacement plan, we address roughly four percent each year. We expect it to last thirty years with proper maintenance, such as cracked ceiling and seal coating. As for our combined district sidewalks, collectively, that would extend twenty miles at a six-foot width, long enough to go from Woodland Elementary to Rush Creek Elementary and back. We are replacing two to three percent annually with an expected life cycle of twenty to thirty years.
Thanks, Jeff. The Health and Safety Department is an integral part of our LTFM planning, and we spent approximately one point eight million dollars during the fiscal year on a very, on a wide variety of areas that ensure our students and staff are safe while in our facilities. Every project that involves our facilities that were constructed prior to 1980 is, are assessed for asbestos-containing materials by our health, safety staff, and our environmental consultants to identify and remove asbestos-containing materials before we do demolitions. In addition, our Health Safety Coordinator, Rachel Kohler, was the project manager overseeing the modernization of elevators at Arbor View, Osseo Senior, Osseo Middle School, Park Center Senior High. Rachel also has the project management for the replacement of the fire alarm systems at Zane Wood and Park Brook Elementary. Now we'll take a high-level look at the LTFM-funded projects that will be beginning under, or be underway in the spring and summer of 2025. The major projects are Brooklyn Middle School Phase Two, Maple Grove Senior High, Osseo Senior High, Arbor View Elementary, or Arbor View Early Childhood Center, and the seven elementarys with next-generation learning spaces. Brooklyn Middle School will be the Phase Two, this will be the Phase Two of the Brooklyn Middle School project, and this will be approximately a ten million dollar project and focused on both LTFM and Build a Better Future-funded portions of the total remodel of the first floor. Pictured here are renderings of the parts of the first-floor entrance, common areas, and the lab settings. The LTFM portion of this project refreshes all the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing components. It will also cover restorations of finishes, lighting, lockers, and restrooms. This spring will mark the beginning of the multi-phase project at Maple Grove Senior High, with LTFM covering over twenty million dollars in mechanical restorations that will be replacing all of the air handling equipment and the hydronic piping. All the existing classrooms will be receiving new ceilings and lights, and some will be receiving more extensive remodeling. We will be providing more details to this project in the coming Build a Better Future presentations after the bid awards. Pictured here are renderings of two of the common spaces at Maple Grove Senior High. The LTFM funding will be covering the renovations and restoration of all the mechanical equipment that support these beautiful redesigned spaces. In addition to Maple Grove Senior High's project, we are midway through the planning process for the addition and restorations to Osseo Senior High. The project will involve a significant amount of long-term facility maintenance, mechanical work that will round out the work that has been underway since 2018. The Osseo Senior High project will issue in February, and construction will begin in the summer of 2025. Throughout the system, we will be remodeling all the elementary schools to update the media centers, create maker spaces, flex rooms, and outdoor classrooms. The LTFM portion of these remodeling efforts is focused on the media center and the existing classroom restoration efforts. In the summer of 2025, we will start with seven schools: Woodland, Basswood, Oakview, Rush Creek, Palmer Lake, Fair Oaks, and Cedar Island. The schools with the same floor plan, Basswood, Rush Creek, Woodland, and Oakview will have a common theme and design with the same difference, with some differences in the layout and colors. Pictured here are renderings of one of the school's media centers and the maker space. Fair Oaks, Palmer Lake, and Cedar Island have a similar layout and will be renovated this summer. We are showing some preliminary renderings for the media center and flex spaces. We are currently working with the site teams, and we'll have full layouts and color selections by the end of this week. At Woodland, Basswood, Oakview, and Rush Creek. At Woodland, Basswood, Oakview, and Rush Creek, we will install the first outdoor classrooms that involve a collaboration with our long-term facility maintenance civil workers, work, and the Build a Better Future Initiative to create these new learning spaces. We will be doing some extensive mechanical restorations at Arbor View Elementary, Early Childhood, Arbor View Early Childhood Center. This will involve the replacement of the boiler plant, air handlers, piping, air conditioning. In addition, there will be replacing ceilings, lights, and refreshing finishes throughout the facility. This project will be awarded on tonight's consent agenda. As I mentioned at the start of our presentation, I'm proud of the work that our facilities team has accomplished in our efforts to be good stewards of our community assets. I greatly appreciate the work the school board has committed to and the LTFM objectives and the community's support for this important work. I'll open it to the board chair for questions.
Board members, questions?
No question, just a comment. Thank you so much for all the work you and all of the team does. You guys do a remarkable job making sure that our schools are safe and look good for our students so they feel supported in those environments, and you do really good investments in saving the district money long-term. So I appreciate you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to add to that. I've seen the amount of money that has been underspent on all of our projects, and I appreciate that financially. And then, as a teacher, I am very excited about all these renovations. And as someone who saw Arbor View Early Childhood Center be built from the Maple Grove City Hall, it's, it's exciting that we, that, that's gonna get updated as well. Particularly excited about the outdoor classrooms as well. Are you, your team works so diligently on making sure that everyone gets input and that it's done with style and grace and a financial responsibility. Super appreciate it.
Thank you.
Continuing to echo the comments, it's just phenomenal to see these every year, the amount of work that goes in, in such a short amount of time and the efficiency and effectiveness from a financial and an operations perspective. And even with our financial presentation tonight, when you look at our district, the strength of it, and the fact that we are not making cuts, and most, many, many school districts across the state are, it's just a continued testament to how much thoughtfulness goes into these decisions that continuing to come under budget to develop the efficiency in the heating and electricity savings. And it just comes from everywhere. So we have such a high, excuse me, standard of excellence across all of our departments that's paired with our instruction. And it's just, I'm so glad that there's so many community members that can see this work that's done. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our next agenda item is the audience opportunity to address the school board. I have thirteen cards here, which would be a significant amount of time. And so I'm asking that speakers to be sure to keep it to three minutes. And if you find that someone else has already made your point and you want to make yours shorter, we'll take that. But you definitely have your three minutes if you feel that you need it. Just a few reminders, I will be calling people in the order of students, parents, staff, community members, and others. When I call your name, you can come to the microphone and state your name and the topic, and whether or not you're a district resident. Make sure that you address the entire board and not an individual. If you have handouts, then you can give them to the board's secretary, Sherry. And then, just a reminder that we're all going to listen and not respond back, including clapping or comments. And that this is just simply for us to listen to what you are wanting the board to hear. So we appreciate that. If it's a personnel concern, just a reminder to take that to the principal and then the follow, and then the appropriate people after that. So with that all being said, Natalie Sonic is up first.
Good evening. My name is Natalie Sonic. I'm a resident at Maple Grove. I have a child attending this district. I'm here tonight to talk about the lack of transparency by the school district in relation to the library content that our children are currently being exposed to without parental knowledge and therefore the need for a book rating system. We can all agree that school libraries are an essential resource. They serve as a place to seek knowledge, imagination, and learning, offering students access to countless books that support their academic growth. However, with school libraries containing such a large collection of books, comes a critical question: How can parents and guardians know what their children are reading? And more importantly, can they make informed decisions about what they are exposed to? This is where a clear, measurable, consistent rating system for books in school libraries becomes necessary. Our schools have been found to contain books with graphic images of oral sex, anal sex, explicit descriptions of sexual acts and arousal, graphic imagery of descriptions of how to masturbate, information on how to look up porn, and encouraging students to pay for porn. Books that contain sexually violent scenes of rape, parents sexually molesting their children, impregnating their children, stories of describing of use of sex toys and how they can enhance sexual pleasure. Parents and guardians need to know what their children are being exposed to. They deserve to be shown pages of these books. Yet this board has created rule after rule to restrict parents. Just as movies, video games, and are rated for content appropriateness, books in school libraries should similarly be categorized based on areas like sexual explicitness, profanity, and violence. These ratings would provide a clear, easily accessible guide for parents and guardians. Why is having a book system, rating system important? First, it respects the diverse values and beliefs of families. A rating system gives parents the tools they need to make decisions that align with their values without imposing a one-size-fits-all approach on the entire school community. Secondly, by offering a rating system, schools can show that they are making a good faith effort of offering transparency, which this board claims to uphold and value. Finally, a rating system for books is about creating a balance between educational freedom and parental oversight. A rating system gives parents the clarity they need to make informed decisions about their child's reading material while maintaining a value of the school library as, as a safe place for growth. Parents and not schools need to be the decision-makers regarding for what is and what is not appropriate for their children. This is not about censorship. It's about empowering parents and respect for diverse perspectives. Thank you.
Thanks, Natalie. Ladon, you're up next.
Good evening. Ladon Severin, district resident, and this is my friend Latasha. We collaborated on this speech because it's longer than three minutes, so I'll do the first part. Tonight, I'd like to comment on the increased citizen involvement in our district, even among folks like myself who no longer have our kids enrolled. Because as we've mentioned before, we're all stakeholders in this endeavor, whether we realize it or not, and how this generation turns out all deeply affects all of us in our nation and in this hour of history. So as a board, you've tolerated well over a hundred of these little public comment speeches over the past two years, and I do want to thank you for that, especially since three of you are stepping off the board in January. And I want to acknowledge your time commitment and energy you put forth to do what you have thought was right to do. In the simplest form, here's what I and hopefully many of us are working and praying and looking for. We're looking for grown adults who've been put in positions of power, who are in alignment with God's protective posture over young people. We take great measures to protect our scholars physically at our facilities, and indeed, we should. So why not the hearts and minds? Is the guarding of a young mind not as vital as the guarding of a young person's physical safety? Just one litmus test for a district stewardship of hearts and minds would be what they curate in their school libraries. The books we've been challenging lately at the hearings are sexually explicit. That's the common thread. That's the common standard they violate. Yet because our district has no standards about books, the committees have found ways to circumvent our main concerns and even construe some of our challenges into something that they're really not. There's been a handful of other folks coming to public comment, casting aspersions on us for the caliber of the decency that we're trying to have the board uphold regarding books and other things. One gentleman's comments about HBO has really struck with me and it motivates me. The main gist of his comment months ago was that it's laughable for people like us to be up in arms about this stuff when the average teen has seen so much worse on HBO, et cetera. How dare we justify pornographic content in our schools by comparing ourselves to a cable network and what some of our students might be exposed to in their own homes during their own free time? Those personal choices, thank you. Those personal choices and other people's lack of standards are out of our control, obviously. But the school board and the school district should not be out of our control.
We are praying and so eager to find elected officials and high-ranking admin who see the scandal in having the school district measure themselves in any way by HBO. We are looking for leaders who are unapologetically holding themselves and this institution to a completely different standard and higher purpose than peddling pop culture and even slightly resembling its sexual chaos. At these book challenges, we keep hearing that books provide windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors, kind of a nod to the concept of books opening readers up to a whole new world, new adventures, new perspectives, et cetera. Sounds harmless and lovely and inspiring, right? It isn't. We have no business offering windows, mirrors, and sliding glass doors to graphic narrations of child abuse, chronicling incest in detail, reading the thought process of a fictional pedophile explaining why he prefers young girls, or windows, mirrors, and doors to fictional teachers sexually experimenting and with agreeable students in his own home, bestiality experimenting with sex toys or teens despising their own biological sex. The content I just listed is literal representation of content that is in the handful of books that have already been challenged in this district, yet kept in our school libraries. Wash your hands of this content. Get some form of standards in place. Stop putting all of the selection responsibility on one college-educated librarian. Stop revering college degrees as some elite pedigree that instills ethics and morality and sound judgment because it doesn't. This is all so much more than challenging a book or two, isn't it? Indeed, again, it's about grown adults coming into alignment with God's protective heart over young people's minds and contending with those who refuse to do so. Accountability and standards are lacking, and we need you to raise the bar. And here's a quick quote from one of my favorite books, from my favorite book. "It would be better to be thrown into the sea with a millstone hung around your neck than to cause one of these little ones to fall in sin." Thank you so much.
Okay, next up, Leila Wiser.
Hi, everyone, and good evening, school board, the community. My name is Lala, and I am a member of this Maple Grove. My daughter actually graduated this past June. And it was brought to my attention last April when I was talking to Julie. I've known her for about twelve years now. And she just made me aware of certain books within the school library that our kids may have access to. I was not aware of this as a parent. And I guess my question is really is, you know, why do we have these books here? Like, what is the real educational purpose of it? Can't there be a happy medium or a compromise of another book instead to take its place where it's not so sexual and graphic in nature? What's the end goal that we're really trying to achieve? And then, why these books? If we want to teach a lesson or talk about people's differences or experiences, why can't we offer a different book instead that's more tasteful in nature? Why do we have to have something that talks about pornography or how to access it? Sexual stimulation, you know, whether it's with a lifetime partner or a one-night stand or just sexual arousal by yourself? Just very sexually explicit in nature. Some may say, well, maybe one of these books could just potentially help a child based on their own experiences and circumstances. But what about the other kids that maybe it accidentally was put in their hands? You know, we may be doing more harm than good on that. You know, some, some parents may feel that maybe this isn't age-appropriate for their kids. Maybe they don't want their kids to be exposed to reading something like this or having access to it, especially just in the school library. The list of questions could go on, and it's a fair concern. So as a parent, when I'm reflecting on this, all I'm asking is that, one, we should know and have some sort of transparency of what books are available for our kids to take out, especially when they are sexually explicit in nature. We should also be made aware when our kids are taking out these kinds of books. Furthermore, we should really just have a say on whether or not we want our individual kids to, to take out books like this. And also, like, what is the appropriate age for these books to be taken out? You know, I was talking to-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Okay. I was talking to my boyfriend, who is, grew up in the urban neighborhood in Minneapolis Public School District. A lot of diversity, people of color, different hardships. He has a ninth grader, and he said he would never let his daughter, like, read something like this. Like, he would want it under his supervision. So all I'm just asking for is, like, where is the transparency? And could we implement processes, processes in place for our children? Because, like, they're here at the school and we feel like it should be a safe environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Nia Muller.
Should I start? Hello, my name is Nia Muller, and I am a former student of Maple Grove Senior High. From the perspective of a mother raising a young boy, I am deeply concerned about the potential impact of this book. Rape, other sexual violence, incest, and child abuse is not the first introduction to sex I would want my son exposed to. It is erotica and it is literary pornography. There are peer research studies recognizing the implications of that. Colly's actions are presented without clear condemnation, and the narrative forces readers to linger in his perspective. What happens if a pre-teen or teenage boy, unprepared to grapple with this, misinterprets Colly's violence as an expression of power, control, or dominance? Without proper context or guidance, this content could desensitize impressionable boys to the gravity and horror of sexual violence and confusion around consent. What if a young student acted out what he read or misinterpreted its portrayal? Would the school district be ready to assume responsibility and address the consequences legally, morally, and emotionally? Additionally, for young black girls who may already face struggles with self-image and societal rejection, this book's portrayal of a little girl who believes her worth comes from having blue eyes only reinforces damaging narratives. Instead of empowering our daughters to see their beauty and value, the bluest eye exposes them to Pacola's victimization, her suffering, and ultimately, her mental and emotional destruction. The portrayal, rather than offering a path to healing, places young black girls into a cycle of self-loathing. Pacola's desire for blue eyes reflects a larger societal message that blackness in all forms is not beautiful. For many young black girls, reading about Pacola's desperate longing to change her appearance may only deepen the feeling that they too are not good enough as they are. I too was a young black girl in a predominantly white school. The reminder of this narrative is unnecessary and it is harmful. Instead of helping us embrace our natural beauty, the bluest eye teaches us that our appearance, our skin color, and our features are inherently flawed. There is no bright light at the end of the tunnel, and this book, Black is Not Beautiful, period. In a world that already often tells black girls we are less than, this book does not offer solace, strength, or empowerment that we need to instill in our daughters. They should be reading stories that affirm their worth, that highlight their resilience, and that help them see themselves as powerful and beautiful just as they are. Instead, it might leave them feeling like Pacola, desperate, lost, and ultimately destroyed by a beauty standard that is impossible for us to achieve. I want to be clear. I do not object to discussing these themes of the bluest eye, themes of race, trauma, and societal rejection. These are important issues, especially for young black students who are navigating their identity in a complex world. There are ways to explore these topics that uplift, inspire, and educate without exposing students to graphic content that can cause confusion or harm. Thank you.
Brooke Smith. Brooke.
Hi, my name is Brooke Smith. I'm a former student of Maple Grove Senior High. And tonight, I'm reading you a letter from one of my best friends since elementary school. We went to Maple Grove together the whole time. Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. My name is Lexi Bushin. I graduated from Maple Grove Senior High School in 2018. I'm very upset that there is such graphic material available in the school libraries. I believe that providing students with sexually explicit materials desensitizes them to the criminal act of rape. I was sexually assaulted when I was a sophomore at Maple Grove Middle School. And I believe that part of that reason is because my attacker did not believe it was wrong. The book being challenged tonight contributes to the rape culture. As someone who has been assaulted, the book proves to shame young women or men to come forward to prevent them from providing justice for themselves. As a young girl, if I would have read this book, I would have felt like a failure, as the young girl in the book did. With bringing my story forward, I hope at least I at least inspire some empathy for others, as I was one of many victims held back for many years on sharing my story. And this is my perspective on what happened to her and multiple friends that I have. I have seen what rape does to women specifically. I've watched it happen to many of my friends, whether that be in high school or college. It completely ruins their self-worth. If one person is to take advantage of you, what says someone else can't? This book was published in 1970. There are so many things that have changed since then. Please ask yourself this: If you were assaulted as a high schooler in 2024 and knew you could end up being the laughingstock of your school, would you come forward? You can be on Instagram, Snapchat, Twitter, kids making fun of you. The fear will never benefit the victim. I'm not saying that this book should be banned, but I'm saying that there should be a rating system. Even as a 24-year-old woman, I still feel triggered because I have been through these things, watching my friends struggle. I can't imagine how I would feel, reading this still in high school, knowing what my friends have gone through, and trying to understand this all by myself. Please consider who you are giving these things to, as times have changed and a lot of things are different since 1970 when this book was written. Thanks.
Thank you. Julie Smith.
Hi, I'm Julie Smith, and I help run two local programs that work to improve the lives of youth in a world where depression, anxiety, hopelessness, rape, and mental health problems are off the charts. I believe the book I'm challenging later contributes to these problems. We had yet another fatal school shooting yesterday. At least three people are dead. Our children have been desensitized to crime and violence for years by media outlets and video games. This is one of the consequences. What we allow our children to put in their still-maturating minds affects their behavior. We are now in a time where kids are exposed to an extreme amount of sexually explicit materials at younger and younger ages. There are consequences to this as well, such as our kids having to survive living in a rape culture, getting cheated on, being normal, porn addiction, and not realizing that you are worth so much more than what you can offer sexually. I will be challenging a book later tonight due to its violence, vulgarity, and sexually explicit content. In preparing for this night, I have received a plethora of support from friends, family, and community members. People care. We are a diverse community, and that gives us strength. We should be working together as partners and stakeholders, not adversaries. What I'm seeing instead is division and distrust due to an alarming lack of transparency from this district to parents and guardians. I've heard comments that make me believe that some staff district think parents or guardians are the problem. Since getting involved in this book review process, I have been ignored, experienced deceit, a lack of accountability from district staff, broken rules, and witnessed an attempt to silence community member voices. My experience at the building of district-level challenges were one-sided. Committee members were selected by the district to protect the book choices of school librarians. Reevaluation committees were not representative of our diverse community. Not one committee member voted to remove the book being challenged, but every person I talked to in our community was shocked, angered, or very concerned that the district is offering this book to minors. Reevaluation committee members acknowledged that this was a dark and hard book to read, yet they kept it. Why? As adults, we have a responsibility to introduce adult topics when kids are ready for them. In order to do that, we need to be aware of what our children have access to. The district should do the following to improve transparency and communication with parents and guardians: Let parents and guardians know about adult-themed books being offered to students by rating books and providing instructions for parents and guardians to easily review-
Thirty seconds remaining.
-their child's library access. Some parents and guardians would define sections of this book as porn. State law prohibits the distribution of pornography to minors. Books that include sexually explicit content should be identified and restricted to students under 18, or 18 and older, sorry. The district should frequently inform parents and guardians about opportunities to get involved with the district committees, meetings, and policy proposal. It is time we work together, and I hope we can start that tonight.
Thank you. Jana Demel.
Hi, my name is Jana Demel, and thank you so much for allowing me to speak. And I am speaking on the same subject, so we'll try to keep it brief for you. But my husband and I pastor a church here in Maple Grove. I am an ordained minister. And we have raised three children, two of whom have come through the Osseo Maple Grove Schools. We have also been foster parents. We've opened our home to families in need. We've taken in young people who are in and out of the foster system, trying to come out of addiction, setting their lives on a good path. We've walked many families through their greatest sorrows and also through their greatest joys in life. I've worked with the end council and taught students for over 25 years. And I've worked in seven different regional schools, middle schools and high schools, and I've also worked in three universities. So I'm a professional when it comes to students, I would say. So I'm currently working with many students from District 279 schools. And I've also worked for a long time with juvenile offenders, specifically juvenile sex offenders. The one thing in my experience that a lot of these young people have in common, especially regarding juvenile sex offenders, is there's almost, they almost exclusively all share adolescent exposure to sexually explicit materials. I've seen it for years, and I come from the perspective of trying to pick up the pieces of hurting and broken lives. I have young people all the time that are stepping into adulthood that are trying to pick up these pieces. They're trying to learn how to do sex in a normal and healthy way, when their normal was disrupted during adolescence by something they heard, saw, or read. Study after study proves without a doubt that the teenage brain with exposure to sexually explicit material, it creates synapses or pathways directly to that reward center, and they don't have the opportunity to go through the bridge, right, of the prefrontal cortex for any critical thinking because it's just not ready. Though, just like any teenager, it's heading toward the reward in the fastest way possible, right? Those neurons are always looking for the fastest road. Once that pathway is paved, that behavior becomes natural and instinct. So it's exposure to sexually explicit material. It's also that way with material that is violent or risky in nature. Several studies by National Library of Health, the American Psychology Association, Psychology Today-
Thirty seconds remaining.
Yep, they warn there's a direct link between exposure to sexually explicit material and dangerous sexual behavior as an emerging adult. Specifically, early sexual behavior, unprotected sex, multiple partners leading to further damage through STIs, mimicking aggressive behaviors, and mental health issues. In other words, this exposure is having a hugely negative impact on our students' adult lives. We send our kids to school in the hopes they build pathways of myelination in their brains that'll give them a good chance at a great adult life. The question today is that knowing these materials are hurting them, should we proceed? Thank you.
Britt.
Good evening. I'm Dr. Britt Stusy, and I'm a district resident. The district asserts some of its core values to be honor, integrity, belonging, inclusion, and transparency. However, a systemic breakdown in these core values have been observed lately. In June 2022, the school board passed the LGBTQIA+ History and Cultural Resolution with little to no input from the district community, failing at transparency. One direct result of that resolution was the rolling out of the district-wide high school advisory lesson in April 2024. Not only did the district make the process to view the curriculum arduous, it also made it difficult for parents and teachers to opt out of the curriculum. It took a legal demand letter being served to the district in March 2024 the district to even approve basic opt-out accommodations for teachers and students. Secondly, regarding the core values of inclusion and belonging, one of the district's strategic directions is to, quote, "promote inclusive participation of all communities." As a district resident, I didn't feel a sense of belonging and inclusion when the coordinator of digital learning and instructional media, district general counsel, and a school board member advocated for barring district residents from initiating a reevaluation challenge under Policy 62B. One would think the district would be working to strategically move engagement barriers, not installing them. Lastly, the district has failed to uphold its, has failed in its duty to uphold honor and integrity. Under the previous version of Policy 652B, only parents or guardians were eligible to serve on reevaluation committees and in the chairperson role. However, the coordinator of digital learning and instructional media nominally selected a district resident to serve as chairperson for three district-level challenges in 2023 through 2024. District General Counsel failed to verify and enforce committee member eligibility. Moreover, District General Counsel attended two of those challenges and did not remove the ineligible chairperson. In restitution to the challengers, the district-level decision should be overturned, and the three challenges, books, should be eligible for retrial. Additionally, the digital learning coordinator should be prohibited from selecting book reevaluation committee members, and a neutral party should be serving in the facilitator role. At the November 2024 district-level challenge, District General Counsel was under the impression that the challenge was still following the previous version of Policy 652B. By this account, this district-level challenge was in violation of policy as a district resident was serving as chairperson. The willful actions of the district exhibited by the examples mentioned tonight have led to a failure in trust among many parents, district residents, and some staff members. I invite you as a board to recommit to the values you espouse. It is your duty to give authentic action to back up your claims of honor and integrity, belonging, inclusion, and transparency, and to hold district administration and committees accountable to those values as well. Thank you for your time.
Max Maher.
Hello, I am District Resident Max Maher, and my topic today is tolerance. So awesome to see the choir today. I spent over a decade of my life participating in choir, where each year I was surrounded by people of different races, creeds, cultures, sexual orientations, so many different backgrounds, and much of choral repertoire, of course, is nonsecular. And Catholic churches and cathedrals were often fitting spaces to create beautiful music. We sang religious lyrics and shared spaces with each other that had sacred rituals, symbols, and traditions. Yet throughout my choral experience, I never witnessed anyone disrespect these symbols. We understood that even if something wasn't sacred to us, it held deep meaning for others, and that respect is the foundation of genuine inclusivity. Next month, a new member will join this board who, it seems, could benefit from this understanding. This citizen stood here where I am now, displaying a pride flag that she intentionally defaced, claiming in bad faith that it somehow excluded and hence discriminated against-
Max, you are identifying an individual board member.
Referencing, but the topic is toward the board?
Just don't speak about a particular board member, just the board.
A person demanded that this flag be displayed in schools across our district, falsely asserting that the district prioritized queer voices above all others. But that is not what this flag represents. The pride flag stands for support and visibility for LGBTQ+ individuals who have historically faced marginalization, discrimination, and violence. It doesn't exclude hetero-sexual perspectives. It celebrates and affirms the diversity and rights of LGBTQ+ people within our shared community. Here's what we know from a recent survey on mental health, which included more than 28,000 young people ages 13 to 24 across the United States. Nearly two-thirds of LGBTQ youth reported that potential state or local bans on discussing LGBTQ topics in schools significantly worsened their mental health. And most alarmingly, 41% of these youths seriously considered suicide in the past year. The role of school board members should be to elevate all student voices, not to mock those that don't align with personal beliefs. By superimposing an image onto this flag to distort its values, the citizens' actions went beyond intolerance to outright disrespect and sent a signal that invites division and emboldens bigotry. I call for the board to stay vigilant against such pitiful attacks on the protection, support, and respect for LGBTQ+ students, their families, and friends. And finally, since book challenges are a central topic tonight, I want to address a troubling detail. When asked on their questionnaire whether they had reviewed the bluest eye in its entirety, the challengers replied-
Thirty seconds remaining.
We're not discussing a specific person.
Okay, so on the materials for the forum, on the forum, when asked about bluest eye in its entirety, they wrote, "I didn't have to."
I wonder, is there disclosure of confidential activity from the committee?
It's in the board materials.
It's board materials.
It's board materials.
And also added, "It's probably a good story." So if we were to take these challenges seriously, especially when they reached the school board after passing through two committees that did their homework and unanimously voted to retain the material, it's only fair to expect that they come from individuals who have fully reviewed the content and are truly qualified to offer such criticism. Tonight, I trust the board will once again uphold its commitment to sound judgment and intellectual integrity. Thank you.
Thanks, Max. Annie Cosell.
Good evening. My name is Annie, and I'm a district resident. I'm a mother of two, which, and we, my two kids attend private school. Our family decided private school was a better option for us, and it offered our children a moral and spiritual code that was just our choice. For me, the pinnacle reason why I chose to enroll our children in private school and not the Osseo District School is because of the trust issue that we have. I don't trust the district with my children. 94% of the children in the 2019 Minnesota Student Survey reported that they thought it was a good idea to have an SRO at school. In the same survey, 62% of the students felt comfortable going to their SRO if they had problems or needed help. Many students viewed their SRO as a trusted adult. In October 2023, three board members failed to support a resolution that would have these, that have be asked the state legislator to clarify language in a statewide school discipline law and allow police officers, the police, sorry, allow police departments to put their officers back in the school. Osseo District students came together to make their voices heard and organize a petition to bring back these SROs. You would think it would be unanimous among the board members, yet three board members prioritize their own personal agendas over the safety of the students. Under Policy 441, Section 6, Internet Safety also states, "Access to visual depictions that are obscene child pornography or harmful to minors will be blocked or filtered." In subsection B, "Harmful to minors" is clearly defined with examples presented of harmful content. If the district can define content that is harmful to minors in terms of technology, then it should be able to define harmful and explicit content in terms of instructional materials and books, library books. Policy standards should be consistently applied, not selectively applied. Trust is earned, not given. This district has failed to earn my trust. This district has lost my trust because of safety. It's just not a top priority. The district has lost my trust because they failed to remove the instructional materials and books with explicit graphic content. My kids attend two schools, not because, two schools in the, not in the district, but not because we can afford it. It's because we choose. And when I asked my kids about this inappropriate conduct or inappropriate material at the school libraries, they were just mortified. And it's our job to protect our kids. I'm a Columbine survivor. I lived in Denver, and I can't even imagine not protecting my kid with every being that I have. And all of us have the responsibility to protect our kids, our nieces, our nephews, everything that we can until it's gonna be too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Stacy Jones. Do you two want to come up together, or Stacy? Do you and Michelle want to come up together? Okay. Looks like you're together. So Stacy Jones and Michelle Cogswell.
Hi, I'm Stacy Jones. I'm a district employee and a district resident. I am also the president of the Osseo Administrative Professionals Union Local 7343, formerly known as the AESP's, and I am an administrative assistant at Elm Creek Elementary. I am here on behalf of the Osseo Administrative Professionals regarding support of our current contract negotiation with Osseo Area- contract negotiation with Osseo area schools. We have been able to come to agreements on some language changes, some job title changes, and the need for MOUs to resolve some items of interest for fair vacation accrual and probation periods. However, we have not been able to settle on a financial package. Over the years, our group has experienced small wage increases that do not keep up with the rising costs of health insurance. Some of our group has seen their income dropping instead of rising. We have been watching our contract settlements in the district here and are seeing larger wage increases, smaller increase to health insurance, and retirement contributions that are being doubled. Does the school district really believe our health is less important than the other Osseo ISD employees? When we consistently see lower contributions to our health insurance compared to others, it is hard for us to come to any rationale on the part of the school district except this troubling explanation. The Osseo Administrative Professionals are told that there just isn't any more money for us. We are often told how important we are, that we are highly valued, but we don't feel that Many of us are the face of our buildings and the departments that we work in. We support all stakeholders. We make decisions and solve problems daily, dealing with a wide range of situations. We are doing all of the administrative assistant work that you would expect and much, much The other duties assigned are endless. We are covering the duties of ESPs when they're absent, covering nurse duties so that they can have a lunch break. We are scrambling to find coverage for staff and teachers when we have absences with no subs. We are navigating students, parents, and community members' concerns, often de-escalating and finding a solution to their immediate issue. Often, we have a phone at each ear and a walkie in our hands, juggling all the issues. Our value is endless, and all we are asking is to be compensated fairly. We love our jobs, for the most part, and we want to continue working for Osseo area schools. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Cogswell, and I am not only a resident, but I am, I have lived here since I was in fifth grade, and I graduated from Park Center. I am also a union negotiator with the Osseo Administrative Professionals Union Local seventy-three forty-three, and I am an administrative assistant at Northview Middle School. I am here on behalf of all Osseo Administrative Professionals in District two seventy-nine. I want to not only share with you our desire to negotiate a contract that values our worth and the important role we play in this district, but to also impress upon you the small wage increases we have received in the past, increases that in no way keep up with the rising costs of healthcare or even the cost of living. Our income currently does not compensate for the difference our group pays in insurance premiums. Using the HSA Employee Plus One Insurance Premium as an example, a teacher pays eighty-four dollars per paycheck for insurance premiums. Our group pays one hundred and seventeen. This is a thirty-nine point three percent increase in premiums for administrative assistance. We, as a support staff, make significantly less than teachers. Why are we carrying this burden of higher insurance premiums with lower compensation rates? Why have we historically been on the low end of all pay increases? Why were we recently told that there just isn't any more money for us? Why is this the norm when we provide an essential service to our entire district community? We work for the fifth largest school district in the state. Your two thousand twenty-four financial statements, general fund budgety highlights, excuse me, show actual expenditures were nine point nine million under budget. It also highlights within the financial statements that there was a seven point five increase in salaries and a seven point one increase in employee benefits from two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. Where do we fall in there? One of the core values of the district states intrinsic value as each scholar, staff member, and family are valued and respected for their perspective, experience, and contributions. We, as staff members, hold intrinsic value, and we feel that the district can better support us in order to hold true to the world, to their words, excuse me, that we are not only respected, but valued. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Our next agenda item is the superintendent's report, Dr. Heil.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Mosquita Jones and the school board members. I want to take a moment to reflect on incredible work happening across our Osseo area schools and express gratitude for everyone who makes our district a place of excellence and belonging. So a regular part of our superintendent's report is to share points of pride in our district. By sharing our points of pride, we're taking time to recognize and celebrate the scholars, staff, and community members who are contributing to the accomplishment of our mission. So I have members of our district cabinet here to assist in sharing some of those examples from the last month.
In the area of achieving dreams, first trimester, students at Osseo Middle School participated in Colors of Community, the first of three murals to be created by students as part of a mural project funded by a grant from the District two seventy-nine Foundation. The mural explored students' relationships with their surroundings through collaborative art and was spearheaded by art teacher Gretchen Abeglin in partnership with Indian education specialist Jill Lindell and artist in residence Kevin Clover. In the area of contributing to community, the Osseo Education Center recently launched a new storybook trail on the grounds of the school. The trail, which wraps around the grounds, lets visitors see a new page of a book at each station.
In the area of lifelong learning, November was Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures and histories, as well as the essential contributions of Native people and the over ninety tribal nations represented in Osseo area schools. On November eighteenth and nineteenth, the American Indian Education Department hosted several events in the Indian Education Cultural Resource Center at Northview Middle School, featuring beating club, lacrosse practice, and a drum and dance circle. Garden City Elementary School recently celebrated Mung New Year. Presenter Holly Vane shared information about the holiday with groups of students all day November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, including the tradition of walking under a rope to wash away any bad energy before receiving good energy for the new year, and the tradition of ball tossing among groups of young people at Mung New Year to make new connections.
Third graders at Rice Lake Elementary recently had the opportunity to make fried bread with Principal Diane Bagley. The students learned about the importance of fried bread in Native American culture and experienced what went into making the bread. Nicole Praska, a forensic scientist at the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension, visited Brooklyn Middle Steam School on December fifth to share information about her career path and the science behind forensics. Praska taught the students about latent prints and the techniques used to lift fingerprints from different objects and under different conditions.
In the area of mission-driven employees, Amy Patton, counselor at Basswood Elementary School, was recently awarded the University of Minnesota College of Education and Human Development Distinguished Alumni Award. This award honors alumni who have brought distinction to their professions and communities and makes a positive difference in the lives of children, youth, families, schools, and organizations. Each day, Patton assists scholars in a variety of ways, greeting them in the mornings and working with students both one-on-one and in small groups.
All right, at this time, we'd like to recognize this evening's business, at this meeting, the last board members' meeting for Heather Douglas, Tamara Grady, and Jackie Mosquita Jones. We'd like to say a simple thank you that is surely not enough to say that to each of you for your exemplary service on behalf of the scholars, staff, and families of ISD two seventy-nine Osseo area schools. Few people in our world would be able to sit in this seat as our school board members do, so I hope you understand that. Thank you for going above and beyond and taking the hits when you took the hits and helping our babies when you helped our babies and our scholars. The photos will be short from each of these, I'm sorry. Incredible humans are from their earlier days in campaigning for their respective seats for school board. So Mrs. Heather Douglas first ran and was elected in twenty sixteen and was re-elected in twenty twenty. She served as a clerk and a treasurer. Next, we have Jackie Mosquita Jones, who first ran and was elected for a two-year term in twenty eighteen, re-elected in twenty twenty, and has served as vice chair and chair. And then we have Tamara Grady, who ran for a four-year term in twenty twenty and has served as a clerk. So Heather, Jackie, and Tamara, thank you for your dedication, your leadership, and your service to Osseo area schools, community. It's been a privilege to work alongside you. It's only been a year and a half. I don't know if that's good or bad for you, but as we navigated both challenges and opportunities, and you always did it with a shared commitment to our students, to our staff, and our community. Together, we made significant progress in investing our mission of our district to provide an excellent education for our babies or our scholars to achieve their dreams. Your passion, your thoughtful decision-making, unwavering focus, and what is best for our scholars have left a lasting impact on our district, and I thank you. On behalf of our entire community, I thank you for your time, your effort, your contributions, your fight, your passion. I thank you. Like I said, it's not easy to sit up here. And I wish you the very best as you move forward. Your legacy will continue to inspire the important work that we need to do as we move forward. So before we ask Heather, Jackie, and Tamara for a few words, I'd like to ask if Thomas, Tanya, or Sarah would like to say anything.
Yeah, I'd like to say something. I just would like to wish Heather, Jackie, and Tamara the best of luck in your next endeavors. I know this service involves much sacrifice, and these roles of serving are not for the faint of heart. I would also like to extend a word of appreciation to your families. It's a sacrifice for them as well. And Heather, I just would like to thank you for modeling true servant leadership. You have continually been others-focused, always keeping the well-being of our students at the center of every single decision you've made over eight years. That's a long time. Thank you for courageously serving our entire district with your consistent character. You are a woman of integrity, compassion, and you have been proven trustworthy. You will be greatly missed. Well, well done, good and faithful servant.
So it's been a pleasure to serve with three of you on this board, and Heather, you predate me. So it's been wonderful to be able to learn from your wisdom and your experience. You've always dug in. You've just been a wealth of knowledge. I've always appreciated the rigor that you've brought to the role and the way that you've been able to really ask fair and tough questions. So I really appreciated that, that character that you've brought to our board and to the service. And really, you and all Tamara and Jackie as well, I know that you'll continue to serve. You served before being on this board in various community service places or on committees or with your children in different capacities. So I know that you'll continue to do that, and I'm sure we'll see you in different places after your board service. And Jackie, I just always have appreciated the way that you lead with your heart and with empathy, and again, bringing fairness for everybody and really having a mind to serve the entire district. And Tamara, I appreciate the passion that you've brought and just the clear focus and the desire to drive change, so thank you.
I echo a lot of what everyone has already said. Director Douglas, you have a longstanding history in our district and a pride of our district that you display every time that you're here. You have a very clear passion for education and bringing out the best in all of our scholars. We have had an opportunity to collaborate within my time on the board, and even though we didn't always agree in this board room, you were always respectful to me within my time on the board, and I always appreciated that. I will also echo what Director Prince said, that especially in work sessions, you ask some of the best questions. And so with all that said, I do want to say thank you for your service, and I really hope that you enjoy that extra family time that you're about to get after this meeting. Director Grady, your energy and passion in our district, I would say is unmatched on this board. We have had an opportunity to collaborate as well on some shared priorities, going back to the start of this board, when we actually both started together. And it has been an honor working with you and learning from you. You have shown up every single meeting, every single month, for LGBTQ scholars and as an ally to the community and as a member of the community on this board. I just want to say thank you for your allyship, being grounded in action and not just words. And beyond that, your, with us starting together on this board, your friendship within this time, mentorship, and just colleagueship, if I'm making up a word, has been very much needed within these last four years. So thank you as well for your service. And Chair Mosquita Jones, I talk a lot about our district when I'm out and about, and I, I don't know if it's just me, but I have a sense of pride in our district and particularly our district leadership, and how we have always remained focused on our mission and have always been able to find a way to move forward. And you don't always see that in the media when you see other school districts in the local and national news. And I think a lot of that is attributed to your leadership as chair. And I want to thank you for taking on that extra responsibility on the board as chair, particularly juggling so many other things in life. You also have an unmatched care and passion for education and even more specific educators and our scholars. And with that, we all know that you brought a very unique perspective to this board that was very much needed. As an actual educator that's in the classroom every single day, it too has been an honor working with you and watching your journey as a board member and as a leader in our district. And I'll miss this board as it is, and I'll remain excited for what's to come starting next month, but thank you all for your service.
Thank you. Then if you want comments, Heather, and then Jackie, then Tamara?
Yeah, first.
I'll, I'll go. I wanted to prepare something, but life gets in the way of that sometimes. I have lived in the Osseo School District community since nineteen seventy-eight, when we had pretty much the lookout and in Maple Grove, and we all congregated in Brooklyn Park around the big mall. And I've seen it grow a lot and change a lot, and it has been one of my life's greatest honors to serve on this school board, to advocate for students and families and teachers and all the, all the people here who are educators regardless of what their title is. It has been an honor to serve with this board. I have appreciated every single person's perspective on this board, and that it has been truly eye-opening and an honor and super-stressful and amazing and exhausting. And I am speaking the truth from my heart as I see it, and I will continue to advocate for students in many different ways, particularly with my own students who are amazing human beings. I have kids with special needs and kids from many different countries and kids from many different backgrounds, and they have experienced things that no little different backgrounds, and they have experienced things that no little human being should have to experience in their lifetime. And it is an honor to learn from them and from all of you. Thank you.
Tamara, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, go ahead. You were first. Well, first of all, I'm really terrible at goodbyes, so this is just a see you later. I will be around still. I still live here. I still have kids in the district, but I will just be here in a different capacity. But I really, I want to say thank you to each of you for all of your comments. I don't know what I was expecting, but I wasn't expecting this moment of recognition. So I just want to say I really appreciate it. And some of you have been here as long as I have. Many of you have come after I started. So for those of you that have been with me the whole time, I have truly enjoyed growing with you and growing the district. And those of you that have come along, you've been a part of that growth, and it's been really beautiful to see the district really just blossom and come together. One thing that I would, I reflect back on is how a lot of times we come to the table with a common goal, but a different pathway to get there. And so it's been really incredible to see us come together and collaborate both as board members and collaborating with our cabinet and the rest of the staff in the district or community members to move the very important goals of the district forward, although sometimes that process has been a little rocky, like, you know, we don't always agree on how to get there. But I think the one truest factor the entire time I've been on the board has been a deep commitment to the excellence of our districts and serving our students in the best way possible. And it's been really great to be a part of the process, even through some of those challenges. And I am really excited to see what you guys do next, and it's going to be hard to walk away, so don't be surprised if you see me pop in and out or in your inbox with a few of those questions for those work sessions where I cannot ask them. But I really appreciate the opportunity to have been of service to Osseo, and it could not have been a better experience, so thank you.
I want to say thank you to our community for giving me this opportunity to serve our district. I am honored and humbled by the experience. I want to say thank you to our teachers who show up every day to teach and support and motivate, which as parents we know is not always easy, to motivate our students. You are essential in providing a quality education for our students. To our ESPs who build relationships with students, you truly are the glue that holds our school communities together. To our administrators who lead our schools to meet our mission, thank you for your commitment to centering student voice in your leadership. And to our students for steadfastly unleashing your brilliance into the world, I am grateful for all of you.
Thank you. All right, so a few final notes and reminders for tonight. There will be no school from December 23 through January 3. So parents, when they tell you that, they're being honest about that. We hope that you all enjoy your winter break and get some family time and relaxation. December 31 is our first lottery deadline for our magnet schools here in Osseo Area School District. January 15 is priority application deadline for any district transfers. So if you want to want to learn any more about these school options, just visit district279.org/enroll. And then the fun stuff, join us at District 279 Foundation on Friday, February 7 at 5:30 PM at Edinburgh Golf Course for a night out, benefiting our District 279 Foundation grant program, and the theme is Western. So you can start shopping over the break now. So thank you, and that concludes tonight's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Hile.
Our next agenda item is school board reports. Director Brooks, do you have a report?
No report.
Director Douglas?
I actually don't have any reports.
Director Prince?
Yes, so DEPAC met, and the group continued their work to dive into some of our stakeholder survey results and began to identify what are the key topics that they want to work on for eventual board recommendations. And then the 279 Foundation met, I believe, since the last time we had a board report. It's been quite a bit of time, like, really reviewing the investments for the foundation and some of the various contributions that had been made in the past and some of the parameters around that. So that was a really meaty 279 Foundation meeting, but also really solid to see the depth of rigor and analysis in preserving the foundation, ensuring that there's dollars for years to come.
Yes, we had our ECMA committee meeting last night, and one of the main things, we spent time examining the building capacity calculation process and how that's going to help as one of the factors that will guide the boundary change process that's coming up. So that was helpful. And I just, I really appreciated, one of the breakout rooms I was in, there was just a good variety amongst committee members. For example, I was in a breakout room with a district parent of students at multiple schools, represented a district staff, and an elementary teacher in our district who also had multiple kids in our district. So I just think it's helpful when we have those balanced committees and hear all those voices.
Director Grady?
I don't have anything, but thank you.
Okay, at this time, I do have a couple of reports. We had our last Northwest Suburban Integration School District meeting for the year, and we looked at the last round of magnet program enrollments, and you just heard that December 31 is a deadline for one of those magnet applications. I encourage you, if you have children, to think about whether one of these magnet programs is a good place for you. We have several amazing magnet programs in our district. The elementary level, we have Birch Grove and Weaver Lake STEM School and the amazing Zane Wood Steam School, which is highly underrated in my personal opinion. If you've ever gone to any of their STEAM events, it's amazing, and the amount of people that they have from the community that come and help students learn about science, technology. Engineering arts and math is phenomenal. And then we have our STEAM and IV programs, as well as our program at Osseo for health careers. And then we had our final 287 board meeting for this calendar year, and we had an amazing report from the Care and Treatment Program, which is a K through 3 program that students who have difficulties succeeding in typical school environments have very intensive therapy and treatment. Includes therapy in the classroom, individual therapy, and family therapy. And we got to see research that when families got opportunities of more of that family therapy and family involvement in the program, their students had a much higher success in integrating back to the typical school program. And in fact, many schools have said, your kids are doing better than most of the typical kids. So it's an amazing program. It costs a lot of money. Byall Foundation is funding a great chunk of it, and I just encourage you to continue to advocate for education and for programs to help our kids across the state. And I just also want to add, not as necessarily a report, but I want to thank Dr. Kim Hile for her service, and I think it's one of the best things we ever did was hire you. And I would be remiss if I didn't say how amazing you are and how your leadership in working on the culture and climate in this district and particularly giving students much more of a voice than we've seen in the past. So thank you so much for that.
Okay, the next agenda item is the consent agenda. Board members, our consent agenda items this evening include meeting minutes and financial reports for September 24, fiscal year '25 budget adjustment, extended educational trips, personnel items, construction bid approvals, and we have 25 grants requiring approval as well. There are staff that put in a lot of time for those grants, so I want to say thank you to those staff. Are there any items that you would like to remove for separate consideration, board Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as printed?
So moved.
Motion by Director Douglas, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Brooks. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Our first action item tonight is the 2024 Payable 2025 Levy Limit Certification. Mr. Moorestead.
Thank you, Chair Mosquita-Jones. So this is just a follow-up from the Truth in Taxation hearing earlier this evening. So we are recommending that the school board approve the 2024 Payable 2025 Levy in the amount of $142,285,708.71.
Thank you. Board members, is there a motion to certify the 2024 Payable 2025 Levy Limitation as presented with the proposed payable 2025 tax levy increase from $2,024,715,976 or .51%?
So moved.
All right, we'll go with a motion by Director Prince and a second by Director Mitchell. Any discussion? Once again, thank you for your presentation. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Moving right along. It's still the John Show. Our next action item is the 2025 Legislative Platform. John?
Come on, you're going to miss this.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so annually, we update the district's legislative priorities and bring that to our December meeting for the board to officially approve. There's a lot of information on this sheet. I'm just going to go over the four main priorities. There's also some demographic information on our mission on the back that I would encourage you to look over, but I'm going to focus on the four yellow highlighted areas. So before I jump into those, just kind of a quick grounding of what we expect from the legislature this year as we're preparing for this. There is a surplus that we're going into for the next biennium. It's not quite what we expected, but it's still a surplus, so we are appreciative of that. I think there's about $616 million available as a surplus. However, the following biennium, and the legislature's always looking at a few of them out, is currently showing around a $5 billion potential deficit. So being very cautious in what we, as a district, are asking for and also very thankful for what the legislature provides, but also knowing that they're trying to think long-term and make sure that the state is healthy, much like our district is. So that'll be the direction, these will be the directions that we're going to be looking forward to advocating for in this following year. So starting with funding, provide stable and predictable funding. Almost always, we will ask for some form of increase to the general education formula. Currently, in state law, we follow the Consumer Price Index between a range. So today, the range is between 2 and 3 percent. Whatever the Consumer Price Index is, that's what the school districts get. We are asking for an additional 2 percent for fiscal year '26 and '27, and also that the range be increased from, to 2 to 4 percent from the 2 to 3 in current law, just to provide a little bit better flexibility should inflation move in that direction again. Next item is to fully fund the summer unemployment insurance. This was funded in 2023 with a one-time pot of money that has lasted, at least through the first few years it will last, which should run, expire sometime next summer is the anticipated date of that. So to be able to fund that long-term would be greatly appreciated. Hold the district-level compensatory funding harmless at the fiscal year '25, our current year's level going forward. Legislature changed some of their calculations in this and has, so we haven't seen what the new calculation looks like. So being able to hold that harmless just kind of, again, helps keep stability for districts. Increase the local optional revenue to $974 per pupil and link to the basic formula. Today, that revenue is $724 per pupil and has never increased. It's just a flat number, so it doesn't move, and every year, we lose purchasing power to inflation in that category. Link all categorical fundings to inflationary increase in the general education formula. Again, there are a number of items where we just get a flat dollar amount per pupil that have not changed. I've been in school finance for about 13 years, and I know the one that always gets me is gifted and talented has been $13 every year that I can find, and I've looked back farther, and it's still $13. It's never changed. So the value of that is obviously very little compared to what it used to be. And then our final area in the funding is fully fund the special education and English language learner cross subsidies. These are both areas where funding doesn't cover the required expenditures, and so we have to dip into the general fund to make up the difference because these are programs that were required and are critical that we fully fund no matter what, so we have to make sacrifices in other areas. Next made category is enhancing school safety and support for mental health by increasing the Safe Schools funding to $108 per pupil to support our current needs for scholars and staff, and expand the allowable uses of long-term facility maintenance funding to include cybersecurity and technology infrastructure hardware and the modification of buildings to enhance safety and security. Our next category is address the workforce shortage. While this has been improving, there is still a definite shortage. So expanding programs and incentives to attract and develop and retain teachers of color and remove barriers and provide incentives to address the shortage of teachers, education service professionals, and all other staff. In our final category, reduce mandates. We're requesting the legislature to fully fund or repeal all existing unfunded mandates, refrain from adding any new mandates, and also review and potentially repeal any obsolete requirements that happen to be in current law. At this point, we would ask the board to approve the legislative platform, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the 2025 Legislative Platform?
So moved.
Moved by Director Brooks, is there a second?
Second.
Director Douglas, is there any discussion or questions for John? Again, we discussed this at the work session last week. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you.
Happy to announce that the next action item is the recommendation for approval of the agreement on the Terms and Condition of Employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and School Nutrition Association, July 1, 2024 to June 30, 2026. Information will be shared by Yvonne Shortz-Lind, Executive Director of Human Resources. Yvonne?
Thanks, Chair Mosquita-Jones. So the school board, of course, has the materials, including the redlined contract, and so I'll provide a summary overview of the changes to this contract. So this involves a employee group that consists of about 125 employees comprised of managers, assistant managers, and nutrition assistants. The agreement, the contract that was agreed to includes some rates of pay changes, career increment increases, and a uniform, changes to a uniform allowance. And with regard to rates of pay, starting in year one, nutrition assistance will be increased to $19 per hour, and in year two, that will go up to $20 per hour. There were, there was also a collapse of our pay grid from five steps to three steps, and then some other changes, increases by step and position to the pay grid. Career increment, sort of pay differentials, were added at five, 10, and 20-year increments. And then the uniform allowance was changed from biannual to, or biennial to annual. With respect to benefits, in terms of the employer contributions, in year one, there's a 5% increase to the, in the employer contribution for the value plan and HSA plans, and in year two, a 3% increase to those plans. The high plan is close to new enrollments across the board. The salary investment outlined above is consistent with the financial parameters established by the school board for the 2024 through 2026 contract negotiation cycle. The two-year agreement results in a 7.22 total package increase and the total financial investment is- and the total financial investment is three hundred sixty-five thousand, six, seven hundred sixty-six dollars over the term of the two-year contract. The superintendent and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the independent school district two seventy-nine school board and the school nutrition association for the period of July first, twenty twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six?
So moved.
Motion by Director Mitchell, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Grady, is there any discussion? Again, I want to say thank you to our nutritionist specialists. You do a very important job for our district. Many of our students, it's the only food they get during the day is the food that we provide and it's an important thing and also many of the students may have their warmest experience in interacting with our nutrition specialists. Speaking as my daughter who got to work for the nutrition department for a little while here. It's, we have some really amazing people. Is there any other discussion or otherwise, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. We have several policies on the agenda that are up for second reading this evening. General Counsel Amy Moore will share the information and will take action on each individual policy.
Thank you, so the policies have been published since our last meeting, no changes have been made. Policy four oh three, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees. The change remains that we've just added some clarification about district employees well-abyed by procedures and employee handbooks and some just little minor word clarifications. And then with the procedure, similarly, very minor updates to the procedure.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four oh three, discipline suspension and dismissal of school district employees with proposed edits?
So moved.
Motion by Director Prince, I will second it, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. The next policy, four twenty-one.
Policy four twenty-one, gifts to district personnel, we just added clarification regarding the promotional or public relations nature with a resale value of five dollars or less, so just putting that clarification in of what is considered insignificant value and that the superintendent has the discretion to determine what the, what value is insignificant. That's to the policy and procedure, just added budget managers.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four twenty-one, gifts to district personnel with proposed edits? So, so moved by Director Brooks and a second by Director Douglas, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Policy four four three.
Policy four four three, tutoring of students, reference, we referenced the Minnesota role specifically and just clarified primary job duties is what we're focusing on and other minor changes.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the second reading of policy four forty-three tutoring of students with proposed edits, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Grady, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Policy four thirty-five.
Qualification of licensed personnel, for this one, you'll see that we focused on rather than trying to describe what folks would need, just saying qualifications required to hold a licensed position.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy four thirty-five, qualification of personnel with proposed edits?
So moved.
Alright, moved by Director Prince, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Mitchell, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Policy four forty-eight.
Workers' compensation insurance, we are proposing repeal of the policy and procedure. It's a one-sentence statute that just says we will follow the statute related to workers' compensation. We have this information in our employee handbook and would like folks to kind of be directed there versus the one-sentence policy, so.
Absolutely, thank you. Is there a motion to approve the repeal of policy four forty-eight, workers' compensation?
So moved.
Director Douglas? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, Director Grady, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. Policy five oh five, student cellphone and technology.
So for the cellphone policy, we updated sentence regarding encouraging students not to bring their cellphones or other electronic devices. We included the addition of smartwatches and earbuds and AirPods as examples of personal devices and then included that the school board directs the superintendent district administration to establish rules and procedures. My update on the procedures is I have received and continually to receive some feedback from our student groups and other staff groups. I have not been able to incorporate that yet into procedures, so that is what I will be doing over break and then going back out to the same groups. Last time mentioned D-PAC and making sure like groups like that is included as well. Still with the intention of making sure we hear, that people see it and that there is time to ramp up to implementation for fall of twenty twenty-five with those procedures for that consistency across all schools.
Thank you. And just a reminder that we're voting on the policy and not the procedure, that can always be amended by operation administration. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of policy five oh five, student cellphone and technology with proposed edits? Motion by Director Brooks, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Prince, is there any discussion?
Yes. Um, I understand the concern about cellphones and there's a lot of reason to be concerned about them. However, I am concerned that it's a one-size policy that may not even serve the most. And I'm speaking from my experience as a mother of a student in middle school that was bullied by a teacher and students in their middle school sixth grade year. They also needed headphones to block out the racism and the homophobia and the transphobia that they heard in hallways. They let me know when food was being thrown at the table of gay kids in middle school. So we used that connection with a cellphone to get updates throughout the day to problem, problem solve the situations that were happening, to support them in finding more help. It was a way of measuring and recording what was going on. And quite honestly, that connection that we had throughout the day really helped them stay in school much longer than they would have otherwise. And the reason I'm voting no on this is because I think parents have the right to keep that connection throughout the day with their young children so that they know that their child is safe and supported in school.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Yeah, so while we don't pass the procedures, we do discuss them pretty extensively in the policy committee and I really appreciate how much feedback has already gone into the process, is continuing to go into the process. I was hopeful that we could be able to get these procedures rolled out yet this year because there is such a high demand for them and we're seeing the success and I want to be able to see that success that we're seeing in the schools that have implemented it in all of our other schools so that it, that we can have that benefit everywhere. And I know that there'll still be opportunity for each site to make some choices before the end of this school year too, so. I appreciate that, it's going to the committees for input, I think it's really important on policy work to have D-PAC and to have as much voice from parents and community stakeholders as possible and the educator, community administrators as well. So I feel like this has been really solid, excellent work led by, led by general counsel, so I appreciate that and for, for clarity there, the procedures allow a lot of opportunity still for communication on devices outside of the classroom, so there is that flexibility. So I think the procedures, and they do differentiate by different level as well, so I'm looking forward to when the public can see those procedures to ensure that they've got accurate information about this policy.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one. Policy five twelve, school-sponsored student publications and activities.
So this is in response to legislation requiring districts to have a policy regarding students' rights to free speech when they are producing school-sponsored publications and activities. Provides definitions on what that means and guidelines for what those rights are, but also still the responsibility of the school staff to make sure that it's being handled responsibly.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the second reading of new policy five twelve, school-sponsored student publications and activities? Motion by Director Brooks and I will second it, is there any discussion?
Sure, I'll add some discussion, this is another, this is a new policy, but I really like in this particular policy especially because it's pertaining to free speech and the, and materials in our buildings. So I do think that this has done a fantastic job of being really clear under the guidelines particularly in spelling out the meaning and definitions of things, so. For example, obscenity, being defamatory, profane or harassing, so. In maximizing the opportunity of free speech and materials, this still has really nice clear guidelines. When we have strong guidelines, it actually maximizes the opportunity for everybody to participate fairly and understand what the parameters are, so there's not confusion and it provides really great transparency, so I really appreciate the work. Again, led by general counsel in getting input from others on this one.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. The next action item is policy six fifty-two, instructional materials section and reevaluation appeal. Under policy and procedure six fifty-two, when there is an appeal to the board related to a challenge of a book in one of our district media centers, the board considers the merits of the appeal. This means the board would, board will consider whether the district level committee's decision to maintain the book was reasonable and appropriate. As part of our work to do this, board members received a copy of the book to read and review and information from the district level committee, which has been summarized and posted with tonight's agenda. Now I'll turn it over to General Counsel Moore.
Thank you, I will provide a short summary and then Julie Smith has asked to speak for five minutes, but not take questions. So the challenger Julie Smith is appealing this and the board pursuant to policy and procedure will consider the appeal based on the merits of that appeal. The board will consider whether the district level committee's decision to maintain the book was reasonable and appropriate. Since our last appeal, we have finalized updates to both the policy and procedures. This challenge had started prior to those changes, during those changes and now after the changes. So as you've heard, some of the process has not been perfect. We are still kind of refining and reflecting on how it's operating. I will actually be meeting with some members of the community who heard from tonight on Thursday as well as other folks that I get emails from, so taking that all in, trying to make the process as best as we can. But tonight, you're just focusing on the book and the merits of that appeal. You have received all the documentation that's been published. Our policy has, you know, the guidelines for what is, you know, the standard of what we're looking at. You know, that it supports, a book supports and enriches the curriculum, meets high standards in literacy, artistic and aesthetic quality. It's appropriate to the subject area for the age, emotional development and ability level, learning styles, social, emotional and intellectual intellectual development of students. Incorporates accurate and authentic factual content, exhibits high degree of potential user appeal and interest. Represents differing viewpoints on controversial issues, provides a global perspective and promotes diversity. Demonstrates physical format, appearance and durability intended for the use. You know, students has, do have a First Amendment right to acts, have access to materials in our libraries that follow those guidelines. So at this time, Julie, if you'd like to go up to the podium.
So quick question for a start, am I able to respond to being called out earlier or not?
We asked that you focus on the book and the merits of the appeal.
Okay, well then I'll just state that I did in fact read the book, so we'll just start that. And then I did, I had Sherri distribute some handouts so you guys could understand why I feel the way I do. And then there was one parent who wrote something but was not able to speak tonight, so that letter is there as well, so. If you give those a glance, it'd be great, okay? Okay, my challenge of the bluest eye, one of the most challenged books in history is on the grounds of the book being violent, sexually explicit, vulgar, obscene and containing graphic language. It violates policy six fifty-two and is harmful to minors. While I recognize that the bluest eye is written by a critically acclaimed author and many believe this book has an extremely high amount of literary merit, the fact is, the book is not appropriate for minors. It is extremely sexually explicit, it details violent incest, normalizes pedophilia and blames children in abuse cases. It contains at least twenty-eight obscene sections and is better suited for the college level. Not in a high school library where about ninety-six percent of the students are minors. Words have power and could cause damage, irreparable harm, sorry. Page one forty-nine, Percola lost her balance and was about to careen to the floor. Charlie raised his hand to her hips to save her from falling. He put his head down and nibbled at the back of her leg. His mouth trembled at the firm sweetness of the flesh. He closed his eyes, letting his fingers dig deep into her waist. The rigidness of her shocked body, the silence of her stunned throat was better than Pauline's easy laughter had been. The confused mixture of his memories of Pauline and doing the wild and forbidden thing excited him and a bolt of desire ran down his genitals, giving it late and softening the lips of his anus. Surrounding all of this lust was a border politeness. He wanted to F her tenderly, but the tenderness would not hold. The tightness of her vagina was more than he could bear. His soul seemed to slip down to his guts and fly out into her and the gigantic thrust he made into her then provoked the only sound she made, a hollow suck of air in the back of her throat. Removing himself from her was so painful to him, he cut it short and snatched his genitals out of the dry harbor of her vagina. She appeared to have fainted. Charlie stood up and could see only her grayish panties, so sad and limp around her ankles. Again, the hatred mixed with tenderness. So when the child regained consciousness, she was lying on the kitchen floor under a heavy quilt, trying to connect the pain between her legs with the face of her mother looming over her. This was the account of a little girl getting raped into unconsciousness by her father. This is hard to read as adults, how does the school expect our youth to process it in a way that adheres to our mission? This book could easily trigger past trauma in the isolation of reading. Page two oh four, the damage done was total. She spent her days, her tendrils sat green days, walking up and down, up and down, her head jerking to the beat of the drummer so distant only she could hear, elbows bent, hands on shoulders, she flailed her arms like a bird in an eternal grotesque futile effort to fly. Prove, providing hope has been a prior argument for retaining a book. Percola not only gets raped by her dad, she gets pregnant, loses the baby, her dad dies and she goes crazy. No one helps, there is no hope. There are other books that present these heavy topics without the graphic scenes, yet offer hope. This book normalizes and decriminalizes pedophilia. Bestiality did not occur to him and sodomy was quite out of the question for he did not experience sustained erections and could not endure the thought of somebody else's. His attentions therefore gradually settled on those humans whose bodies were least offensive, children. He further limited his interest to little girls, they were usually manageable and frequently seductive. His sexuality was anything but lewd, his patronage of little girls smacked of innocence and was associated in his mind with cleanliness. Page one eighty-one, do you know that when I touched their sturdy little tits and bit them, just a little, I felt I was being friendly? I gave them mints, money and they'd eat ice cream with their legs open while I played with them, it was like a party. And there wasn't nastiness, there wasn't any filth. And Charlie loved her, I'm sure he did, he at any rate was the one who loved her enough to touch her, envelope her. at any rate, was the one who loved her enough to touch her, envelope her, give something of himself to her. The book victim blames. Anyway, if she didn't love him, she sure did let him do it to her a lot. This book could easily harm an abused child to keep silent and not get the deserved help that they need to endure long-term abuse. We know our mission. This book does not meet that standard. What does this book offer that it got into our library? Literary merit should not be the only standard that trumps the protection of minors from obscene and harmful content. This challenge is about one thing, sexually explicit materials being offered to minors without parental knowledge. I know The Bluest Eye and other books like it will not be removed. So I'm asking the school to be transparent and responsible at what they offer our students. A principal and others told me that if you want change to happen, you have to come to the board. So I want the school board to form a committee to do the following. Identify and implement a rubric system for library books to ensure the safety of our students. Label books that are rated for a mature audience only and inform parents regarding when those books are checked out. Both chairs of my previous book challenges and almost all of the board members have previously stated they would be in support of such a system to me. I'm requesting the board votes to form a committee to form the system I and others here tonight discussed. Let's protect our children and achieve our mission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So at this point, I am asking if there's a motion to reverse the decision of the district-level committee.
So moved.
Motion by Director Mitchell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Director Grady. All right, at this point, we will entertain discussion.
I'll go first and I spoke with Dr. or General Counsel Moore to make sure that my comments were legally appropriate. But based on this policy, I do not find the material in this book to be age-appropriate, especially when we're considering the high school can have fourteen-year-olds, teenagers, especially minors. This book is not appropriate for the emotional development and the maturity level of all students, again, especially as young, as fourteen years old, and all minors, due to specifically, I'm specifically focusing on the sexually graphic, sexually violent content that was included, incest, rape, and sex with minors.
Any other discussion?
Um, sure. I'm reading a statement on behalf of Cynthia Wilson, the president of the Minneapolis NAACP and its membership. They state their strong support of the decision by the Oseo School District Instructional Material Reevaluation Committee to retain The Bluest Eye by Toni Morrison in the Maple Grove Senior High Library. This pivotal piece of historical literature offers critical insights into the effects of racism and prejudice in society while serving as an essential part of our nation, our nation's literary heritage. Attempts to censor books like The Bluest Eye deny students the opportunity to learn and engage on issues from multiple perspectives when it comes to racial history in America. Such acts of denial perpetuate systemic inequalities in education disproportionately impacting Black students. We commend the committee for prioritizing equity and inclusion and urge the Oseo School Board to uphold its decision. The NAACP remains committed to ensuring that all students have access to a well-rounded and inclusive education from diverse perspectives. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
So this is really tough. I, I think it's really important that when we deliberate that we are, we don't allow outside groups to participate or have sway in the work that we do, even if they are good or meaningful groups. That's been a pattern, that's been evident in this board prior to tonight. But we just passed a policy talking about the distribution of materials in our schools that outlined pretty specific definitions about what obscenity to minors are. And objectively speaking, those passages would not meet that criteria that we just passed in another policy tonight. However, those particular parameters are not explicitly spelled out in our existing policy regarding library materials. So that doesn't apply at this point in time. The policy committee has continued to work together to continue to evolve our policy to be fair and specific. And we have multiple elements of that, including the literary, literary elements and, and maturity levels. And they're, those are actually at odds in this book. At the same time, it's been in our system for twenty years. And for twenty weird years, we've said that while we have these standards, this book has remained in our system. So it's really, it's, this is really tough because we don't have the clarity of guidelines that we have looked at in, in, and in the very other instance, this very evening that was passed by all board members. So is, this is just a tough one. I really do think we need to keep working our policy regardless of the outcome tonight on the vote.
Anyone else?
Good. Um, yeah, so I'll, I'll be quick. I feel like I've said so many of these things in previous challenges, but I think context matters, particularly when you look at the story in its entirety. The Bluest Eye in its entirety tackles real-world issues that maybe we've experienced from a young age. I'd say often unspoken, of trying to navigate trauma, injustice, our identity, and how we fit into this world. I'm fully aware that this book will not resonate with all and acknowledge not everyone has as in-depth of a struggle of identity and self-worth. But this book reflects lived experiences of so many of our students, families, and community members, both in Morrison's time and today. Acknowledging the challenges and trauma one could experience in the real world added through nonfiction or fiction based on reality as part of one's journey. Students in our schools are navigating questions about their value in society, the impacts of beauty standards, and the effects of trauma in their lives and communities. Denying access to this book and others like it risks minimizing the lived experiences. So I'm going to prop up the experiences of others. I'd like to hope that as we strive for excellence in this district, that we are teaching scholars to think critically about the world around them and to comprehend complex texts beyond focusing on a handful of passages or sentences that touch on topics that some would rather ignore. So for me, I would, will be voting to support the committee's decision. But I do, as always, just want to thank Julie for bringing this forward and respecting the process and seeing it through, so.
I just have one brief comment. I would just encourage Dr. Heil and the staff in our district to really consider and evaluate a rating system to provide further transparency for books and potentially limit the use of the book challenge process by creating a greater depth of transparency.
I guess I'm the last one to go here. So during my tenure as a board chair, we have allowed people to speak on these topics and quote other organizations in a decision. So I just want to say that the precedence is there for that. I also want to say that I read the entire thing. I wish I had read it at an earlier age based on experiences that I had personally to know that I was not alone and that it was really a powerful book for me. And I know I'm not seventeen or sixteen or even fourteen, but I do know that at those ages I was reading books with similar material and I was able to process it. And I can't speak for everyone's children, but that's why we need to make sure that we figure out what's best for our each individual children. I'm not against a rating system. I think it's fair to think about that. I also know that it takes a lot on the system to be able to develop something like that. I will be voting nay on reversing the district decision. And I want to remind our board members, as we do the roll call vote, that an aye means that you are reversing the district's decision and a nay means that you are keeping the district decision. Sheri, would you take the roll?
Director Brooks?
Nay.
Director Douglas?
Nay.
Director Prince?
Nay.
Director Misscada Jones?
Nay.
Director Mitchell?
Aye.
Director Grady?
Nay.
Six nay and one aye. I'm sorry, five. Tired.
So with that, the district-level committee, the decision of the district-level committee stands. The final a, action item is approval of the gifts to the district. Is there a motion to approve the gifts to the district in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five hundred eighty-six dollars and forty-eight cents?
So moved.
Moved by Director Douglas. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Brooks. Is there any discussion? A big thank you from all of us. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero. At this time, the board will take a brief recess and then reconvene in the forum room for a closed session. The session will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D. point zero three for labor negotiations with A-E-S-Ps, E-S-Ps, kid stop instructors, RNs, and LPNs, and overall financial parameters. I would like to make a motion to recess the regular meeting for ten minutes and then reconvene in the forum room for a closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Director Mitchell. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion passes six to zero.